Okay, good morning and welcome to the April 25th Board of Supervisors meeting for Lake County. We'll call this meeting to order and start with a moment of silence.
Yes, I do have a moment of silence for the family of Lorraine Jacobs. Lorraine Jacobs was a longtime Middletown resident and passed last Tuesday. She leaves behind three daughters, Dawn, Luana, and Serena. Just want to give condolences for the family.
Okay, thank you. I have one too. This is a really hard one and I reached out to some people in Kelseyville to put this together. So I'm just going to read what has been written, but it's really affected our community this last week. The community of Kelseyville lost one of its finest people a week ago today. A person who dearly loved and was committed to his town and the people that live here. His name is Mike Riley and volunteering is something he and his wife have been doing for over 30 years. Years after being a Boy Scout master while raising his son and daughter, Mike and his wife Kim became Kelseyville's lead volunteers. Often referred to as Team Riley, they are fine examples of how community organizing and volunteering can help a community grow. Mike's willingness to contribute his personal time for the betterment of his community has been an inspiration to all of us. Mike was directly involved in nearly every successful event Kelseyville put on over the last 10 years, including the Kelseyville Pear Festival, Lake County Beer Wine and Swine Bacon Fest, Swig and Jig, Dia de la Independencia, Christmas in the Country, Street Dances, The Artist's Market, and much more. Mike Riley was a founding member of the Highland Springs Trails Volunteers, which was dedicated to maintaining trail access at the Highland Springs Recreation Area. Highland Springs Trails Volunteers started trail work around 2001 when the county asked for help on restoring old riding and hiking trails that were overgrown. When grants fell through, it became the job of an avid group of volunteers to recover about 28 miles of trails. Mike Riley was the backbone of this group. Packing a chainsaw on his trusty mule Reno, he was there every workday doing an immense amount of work enthusiastically. As well as trail clearing, he installed trail infrastructure all over the park and assisted with outreach on the history and botanical study and mapping of the HSRA. He installed safe horse stepovers and hiked a very heavy post pounder throughout the recreation area to install the carcinite posts with trail names at all the trail junctions. After working hard, we all enjoyed lunches and evening snacks while Mike joked and told stories. In 2010 alone, the Highland Springs Trail Volunteers had 1,276 volunteer hours and performed 23 workdays. This group was awarded a Sierra Club endorsement and funds for trail signage and county recognition by Supervisor Rob Brown, the Lake County Board of Supervisors endorsed by the Lake County Sheriff's Search and Rescue, Lake County Sierra Club, and the Lake County Historical Society. The Highland Springs Trail system would not exist in its current form without the work of Mike Riley. But Mike still made more time for the benefit of our community. He helped form the Lake County Horse Council in 2010. As Chair of the Trail Committee, he helped draft policies and produce trail brochures. Mike was also a co-founder of the inaugural Horse Fair at the Kelseyville Pear Festival. For five years, Mike set up the infrastructure and installed corrals to have our horse community represented at the Pear Festival. The Horse Fair would not have happened without all the dedication Mike made. We will miss Mike, but we will never forget what a great man he was. And we dedicate this moment of silence to Mike Riley. Vice Chair Simon, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Yes. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items that we need to consider?
I have none.
Okay. And we will move on to approve the consent agenda. We do have some items to be pulled. 510 will be pulled for a later date and 515 and 516 for clarification. Is there anything else anyone needs to pull? What about from the public? I don't see anyone in the Zoom room either. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for approval.
You mentioned 516 was being pulled.
515, 516, and 510.
Okay. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of 510, 515, and 516.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, our 906 item, public input. Do we have any members from the public here with us today in the chambers or in the Zoom room? I'm not seeing any. Okay. Yes?
I would like Ben Rickelman to introduce himself at this time.
Oh, wonderful.
You could stretch it out.
Just move it up for him. Yeah, go ahead.
Didn't want to make large noises. Good morning, Ben Rickelman. I'm the new Deputy County Administrative Officer with a focus on economic development. I appreciate all the warm welcomes I've gotten within Lake County government and throughout the community. Everyone's been very kind and engaging. I just started a week ago, so I'm kind of in a listening and learning outreach mode at the moment. But in a few weeks, maybe a month, I'll be back at the board with a work plan, kind of what our vision is for economic development in Lake County and kind of in some detail explaining how we'll get there. Bit of bio on me. I've kind of taken a clockwise tour of the country. Grew up in Wisconsin, so there's another Wisconsinite here in Lake County. After that, I was with a neighborhood-based economic development organization in DC, so did a lot of place-based economic development, worked a lot with small business, worked a lot with local government with infrastructure improvement and planning initiatives. After that, I was in the County Executive Office in Montgomery County, Maryland. So worked with several different public-private partnerships there, a few different industries, academia. And then after that, a pretty big cultural shift, but really enjoyed it. I was in San Antonio, Texas, just down in the heart of Texas. It was really interesting, really culturally unique community. So working with a bunch of different neighborhoods, a few different industries, research institutions, the military. Was looking for something a little different. I enjoyed outdoors. I wanted to work in a smaller community, so Lake County really spoke to me and I'm glad I'm here.
Great. Thank you and welcome.
Appreciate it.
Awesome.
Okay, our 907 item is Pet of the Week. Come on up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Serena Copus. I'm with Lake County Animal Care Control. Today we brought Sadie, our other officer today. And this is Tux. He's a two-year Border Collie Shepherd mix. He came to us as a stray and he would be very good in an active home. We don't know what his past was, but he's been very good with us.
Tux. Hey.
Yeah, he'd be really good in like an acreage area and stuff like that. And you could also find him at 4949 Hellbrush Drive at the shelter or you guys can give us a call at 707-263-0278.
He's chasing his tail.
Well, thank you so much for coming in.
I have a question.
Oh.
Sorry to put you on the spot. I know that there, especially in our county, but from what I understand, it's kind of everywhere right now that a lot of animals are being sent to the shelter or the shelter is picking up a lot of animals, kind of like the end of COVID companionship. People have found their old companions and are getting rid of unfortunately their furry companions. Are we full at this moment in time in our shelter?
I believe we are full right now. We do have, I want to say, up to 40 something animals. That's including a pig and several dogs and some cats as well.
Okay. Is the pig adoptable too?
He is adoptable.
We got to know those things.
We wanted to bring him, but we haven't been able to.
Maybe next week.
He's really sweet too.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
How much does the pig weigh?
Um, a rough guess, anywhere from 150 to 200, 250 pounds.
It's a big one.
Yeah, he's a pot belly.
All right. Okay Marina, you can get the pig. Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck, Tux. Hey, our 6.3 item, 908, is National Poetry Month and we have our poem of the week. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name is Georgina Marie Portato and I'm the poet Lorianna Blake County. I missed last week being under the weather, so I apologize for that, but thanks for having me this week. For the final poem of the week, I was thinking quite a lot about which poem I'd read. I was originally going to read No Plant Left Behind, which is a poem about my dog Miko, which I wanted to read in honor of Pet of the Week and since he was adopted by, from the Lake County Animal Care. Then I changed my mind and wanted to read a poem called Small Town Bridge about microaggressions and the sense of inclusion that I've experienced here in Lake County, particularly in the arts community. Then I wanted to read my poem I Also, which is essentially a Me Too poem in honor of this month also being designated Sexual Adult Awareness Month. Last night, I found myself realizing that I was in an emotionally abusive relationship by a new intimate partner and I realized that would be too much. So finally, I decided to honor National Poetry Month today by reading one of my favorite Mary Oliver poems. I think Lake County folks can always appreciate a nature poem since our land and animals here provide us much solace. It's a poem I often introduce when I teach poetry. It's one that usually turn to people who don't know about poetry or don't like poetry and poetry fans. Here in Lake County, poetry has become a vehicle for communities for and healing. This poem is also an example of how no matter what we are going through or surviving or grieving individually, we're all on a path to grace. We deserve kindness and we're all meant to be here. Wild Beast by Mary Oliver. You do not have to be good. You do not have to walk on your knees for 100 miles through the desert repenting. You only have to let the soft animal of your body love what it loves. Tell me about despair, yours, and I will tell you mine. Meanwhile, the world goes on. Meanwhile, the sun and the clear pebbles of the rain are moving across the landscape, over the prairies and the deep trees, the mountains and the rivers. Meanwhile, the wild beast high in the clean blue air are heading home again. Whoever you are, no matter how lonely, the world offers itself to your imagination, calls to you like the wild beast, harsh and exciting, over and over announcing your place in the family of things. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for inviting poetry into the chambers this month. If anyone would like to read more of my own poetry or learn about the work I do, visit GeorginaMariePoeet.com or visit the Lakeport Library this Saturday, April 29th at 1:30 for a free public poetry reading.
Thank you so much. Do you have any comments from the board?
No, thank you.
Anyone from the public?
My name's Ethan, Alcohol Anonymous, Lake County.
Okay.
Just here to see what, where we might be able to do.
Okay. Georgina, thank you so much for joining us this month. Really appreciate it. Okay, we'll close this item and we will go on to our 6.4 item, our 909 AM Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2023 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lake County. With that, Supervisor Crandall.
If you're here for this proclamation, please come up and stand with us. Sir, you said you're part of Alcoholics Anonymous if you wanted to come up. That'd be great. It's all right. Stand with us. And so I'm glad that Chair Pisca asked me to read this because I am a recovering alcoholic myself. It's seven years this year that I've been sober and so I'm glad to read this because of that, so. So this proclamation is designating the month of April 2023 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas excessive alcohol use and misuse impacts adults and youth of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. Cultural norms and social pressures have contributed to excessive alcohol use and misuse. Local Lake County law enforcement agencies, including the California Highway Patrol and the Lake County Sheriff's Department, report for the calendar year of 2022, 102 public intoxication arrests, 172 driving under the influence violations, 21 driving under the influence violations involving other drugs, and 97 DUI collisions, 12 of which resulted in fatalities. Three fatalities were intoxicated pedestrians. And whereas, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided DUI program services to 382 participants in the calendar year of 2022. Lake County Behavioral Health Services has offered treatment services to 55 individuals with diagnosed alcohol use disorders in the calendar year 2022. In the state of California, from 2020 to 2021, an average of 19,335 annual deaths are attributable to excessive alcohol use and 61% of those deaths are due to chronic causes such as alcohol use disorders. And whereas, through Promotion of Alcohol Awareness Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent these problems today. With commitment and support, excessive alcohol use and misuse can be prevented. However, success will not occur overnight. Our patience and continued commitment to alcohol consumption, education, and prevention are imperative. And whereas, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Substance Abuse Disorder Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, healthcare, education systems in Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding, and action to address excessive alcohol consumption and misuse in our community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services Substance Abuse Disorder Services to hereby proclaim that April 2023 is Alcohol Awareness Month in County of Lake. Pass and adopted this 25th day of March 2023. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Pisca. I love those shoes. Would anyone like to come up and speak on this?
Uh, yes. Thank you. April Cambray, Lake County Behavioral Health Services Deputy Director. In hearing the proclamation, I want to thank the board, Jessica Pisca, chairwoman, bringing this forward. I hear all of the work that we've done as a community, but yet my heart speaks to all the work that still needs to be done. I know that together we can make the change. It is up to each of us to continue to invest and commit ourselves into figuring out how we can rally together as a community to wrap around those and make an impact. There's still so much work to be done, but at the same time, I am very grateful and honored for all the work that has been done. So I just wanted to thank everybody. Would anybody else? No? Okay.
Who do I give this to? All right. All right. Picture? All right.
Yes.
And the shoes if you can.
Oh, and the shoes.
Those shoes are very good.
Okay, you got to look at the camera. Yeah, you're supposed to. Thank you. Oh, wait, whoop that. Come on. Thank you. Good boy. One more time. There, perfect.
Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? You can come on up to the microphone. Come on up and you can state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. It's just happenstance that I'm here today and that was beautiful and wonderful. I didn't even know that that was something that Lake County Board of Supervisors had put forth and I commend you for recognizing that. It's wonderful. The reason I wanted to speak for a minute is because I represent, I'm a tribal member for Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians. We're located here in Lakeport, as many of you know. And we purchased last March a facility, alcohol and drug treatment facility in Santa Rosa. And so we are building that up. It's been in existence for 38 years. It will never be just a Native American facility only because it comes to us with about six agreements with unions, large unions. Teamsters, Longshoremen, UFCW8, which is all of the stores like Safeway, Rayleigh's, lots of them. And like I said, they've had longstanding representation there and supported of this treatment facility. But we have also been working with tribes here in the area and we've had a number of tribes. Our band has a scholarship that any native, until and through the end of June, we pay for them to come to the facility. So, you know, I'm always trying to get the word out. I am the general manager there. And a sad thing happened in May of last year. A big portion of a building burned and we lost 11 beds. Fortunately, we didn't lose anyone, but we're in the process of rebuilding that currently. And we are licensed to have 25 beds, so we hope to get the volume back up. It's been low due to the fire, due to COVID, a lot of things. But this is wonderful and I welcome anyone from here in Lake County that needs treatment to please come and visit, you know, our facility and we welcome anyone and everyone. We're building native programs to come in and facilitate Red Road, all White Bison trainings and a lot of trainings that are supportive of a more holistic experience in recovery-related activities for people. So I just wanted to make that announcement. We haven't really been going out marketing a whole lot because of the fire and due to the fire, but we are still open. And I hope to be going to Behavioral Health also and contacting them and perhaps the Sheriff's Department as well to see how we can work together and have conjoined efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And can you give your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lisa Wyler.
Lisa.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you so much for sharing.
Yes, thank you for allowing me.
Okay, so our next item is 930, so we've got a few minutes. We can, let's see, we've got an appointment. We can go to 7.4?
I think maybe since Marina's here, her items are fairly short. They were previously on consent. It has to do with the title clarification.
Oh, okay, so.
515 and 516.
Okay. 515. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 2-382 and 3; B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and EOA Inc., Environmental Consulting Firm, to provide assistance to meet National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MPDES, Stormwater Permit, and Low Impact Development, LID, compliance, and to authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors to sign the agreement; C, approve the reimbursement agreements between the District and the City of Lakeport and the City of Clear Lake to provide reimbursement for EOA Inc. to complete LID and stormwater program services, and to authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors to sign the agreements. And this, I will turn it over to Deputy Director Dela Gilianis.
Thank you so much, Board, and thank you Chairwoman for reading that title. So I do not have to. It is a lengthy one here. But as the CAO mentioned, I am here to just make a minor clarification for item 5.15. What I'm going to clarify is just the amounts tied with Aspect B and C of this item going before the board today. For Aspect B, we have here, which is approving the agreements between the County of Lake and EOA Inc., Environmental Consulting Firm, to provide assistance to meet the NPDES acronym for Stormwater Permit and Low Impact Development Compliance and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign. The cost that is associated with that aspect is services not to exceed $109,600. So I want to make that clarification. And then for Aspect C of this item, approving the reimbursement agreements, we have two reimbursement agreements. One is approving the reimbursement agreement between the District, our Watershed Protection District, and the City of Lakeport, not to exceed $18,358.28. And then similarly, approving the reimbursement agreement between the District and the City of Clear Lake, not to exceed $32,697. So I did want to clarify those costs that are associated with that item.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, this is all good stuff.
Yes. Anyone from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
And if I can make one quick comment.
Sure.
I know that I've been the alternate on the stormwater, but pay attention because I understand its importance. Without these contracts and without the work that these contracts will be doing, there is always the potential of threats coming from the state that we are not following what we should be doing. And this is an important part of ensuring that we have clean water going into our lakes and that we figure out how to protect our environment the most when it comes to stormwater drainage and things like that. So looking forward to approving this and I will make a motion if everyone else is ready. I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 2382 and 3, approve and approve the agreement between the County of Lake and EOA Inc., Environmental Consulting Firm, to provide assistance to meet National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems, Stormwater Permit, and Low Impact Development Compliance and authorize the Chair of the Board Directors to sign for not to exceed $109,600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes and we will go on to the second item.
All right.
Oh, right. Sorry, C.
And move to approve the reimbursement agreements between the City of Lakeport for $18,300, not to exceed $18,358.28, and the City of Clear Lake, not to exceed $32,697, to provide reimbursement for EOA Inc. to complete LID and stormwater program services and authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors to sign the agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we'll do 516. Approve memorandum of understanding between Big Valley Rancheria and the Lake County Watershed Protection District for the installation, maintenance, and removal of flow monitoring equipment on Highland Springs and Adobe Creek reservoirs.
Great. Thank you so much again, Board. Just a minor clarification for item 5.16. I am going to clarify that I am going to clarify that the Board of Supervisors are in this for this item, acting as the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District, and we are authorizing the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District to sign the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, as this infrastructure will be placed on Highland Springs Reservoir and Adobe Creek Reservoir, which is the property of the Lake County Watershed Protection District.
Any comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? Okay.
If there's nothing further, I move we approve the memorandum of understanding between Big Valley Rancheria and the Lake County Watershed Protection District for the installation, maintenance, and removal of flow monitoring equipment on Highland Springs and Adobe Creek Reservoirs. And this motion is made sitting as the Board of Directors for the Watershed Protection District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No?
No?
And authorize Chair to sign.
And authorize the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Watershed Protection District to sign.
Still second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you so much, Board.
Thank you.
I want to thank you. This is a little baby step. It's an important baby step in our Clear Lake Hitch recovery efforts. Thank you and I thank you also to Big Valley Rancheria.
Okay, 6.5, our 9:30 item. Public hearing continued from April 18th, 2023. Consideration of Draft Ordinance Amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to permitting temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation. This is community development and we have Andrew coming up.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is Andrew Amlong, the Cannabis Program Manager. I'm sitting in on behalf of my Director, Maria Turner. She's out sick this morning. So I'm not entirely prepared. I was preparing for a site visit instead, but here I am. So bear with me a little bit as we get through this.
Thank you for the honesty.
Okay, so we are reviewing the amendments from last week to the draft ordinance that would allow a pathway for temporary hoop structures for outdoor cannabis cultivation. As you see in the attachment, certain red lines and certain amendments were made and we do have some public comments on some of these, some of these changes. But with that said, as you may be familiar with this already, I'd kind of like to open it up for conversation at this point, unless you would like me to get into any specific details.
Can you respond to the public comments that we did get?
Yes, from Holly Harris. I was just looking through it.
There's that one and then there's the email that we received from Brian Hall.
Oh, I'm not sure if I'm aware of that comment.
Okay.
Should we address Holly's first and then we can address Brian's?
Okay.
Okay, so as I was looking through this, Holly Harris wrote in that she had, let's see, three, four, six talking points. The first point was that temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation, "We would like clarity on the intended use uses for the hoop structures. We were under the impression these structures would be used for growing cannabis with the ability to extend the season with potentially more harvests. Yet the definition of cultivation in Article 68 and CDD Cannabis Regulations include planting, growing, and harvesting of cannabis plants and the onsite drying, curing, grading, or trimming." Holly brings up a good point. That definition may be all encompassing, but the intended use for these temporary hoop structures should be limited to growing and harvesting. And furthermore, another bit of language that could be added for clarity would be to include that growing and harvesting within an approved canopy area. That could address both her talking points one and three. Moving on to our next point, the duration of use for temporary structures. The draft ordinance does not specify a length of time or number of times that temporary hoop houses can be used. County Code defines temporary as a limited time after which the permit expires. California Code defines a maximum of 180 days. But I believe by using the language, a temporary building permit within the ordinance would imply that 180 days because our Building Division limits their temporary building permits to 180 days. So moving on, hoop structures, hoop structure design guidelines, electrical hookup. The resolution of intent disallowed mechanical, electrical, or heat-producing equipment to be installed or operating in hoop structures. And this also passed the approval of the Task Force Ag Committee and Planning Commission. Yet the draft ordinance now adds an additional clause to Section 1 6.252H, which allows mechanical, electrical, or heat-producing equipment if approved through a separate building permit. That is correct. That is the intent of it. You know, the main focus of this draft ordinance is the temporary building permit, the 180 days that would be associated with a demolition permit to take it down. Should they, you know, and with that, there's clear perimeters to allow for a hoop structure that the Building Division helped us develop. Should they want to go beyond that, they're free to apply for a building permit within that, but it would be a separate permit. It wouldn't be the temporary permit here. Moving on to the next point, surety bond, Knox boxes, and clear plastic. There had been discussion on a surety bond to address abandoned hoop sites. This is not mentioned in the draft ordinance. Recommendation number 13 regarding the fire department and Knox box, our Knox boxes approved by the Task Force Ag Committee and Planning Commission has been omitted. Is there a reason for this? And then Section 1 6.252A, LCCA, recommendations were clear plastic and that was agreed upon in the task force meeting. My understanding is as they moved on in terms of the clear plastic, the task force, you know, balanced a few different options and there are clear defined perimeters, but I think the direction that we wanted to go in was not to specify too much, you know, give everyone a cookie cutter model to go with. Each site's unique, each site and each plan and each cultivator has unique needs and they will submit those plans that we can review at that time. Concerning the Knox boxes and surety bonds, that is still being discussed. I think a lot of people would really like to see those go forward. However, they are not a part of the draft ordinance at this point. You'll probably be seeing those issues and items in the future. So.
Coming back as an amendment?
Coming back as we provide holistic recommendations for a new Article 73 for commercial cannabis activities.
Okay.
And then seeing as I was not aware of Brian's comments, could somebody read them?
Sure, I'll read it to you.
Okay.
It says, "The California Department of Cannabis Control requires all structures to be permanent. DCC 15,003F, all structures included as part of the licensed premises shall be permanent structures. Structures that are considered permanent structures include but are not limited to buildings, barns, sheds, shipping containers, and modular buildings. Structures that are not considered to be permanent structures include but are not limited to structures that rest on wheels or any structures that can be readily moved. All buildings and site plants for buildings other than wood-framed homes and wood-framed agricultural buildings must be designed by a design professional." BPC 5536.1, 5536.2, and 5537. There are no approved design provisions for PVC as a structural material in California. If there is a California adopted prescriptive code for PVC building, then specification stated in the resolution must refer to the prescriptive code.
Go ahead.
Just bringing this up to you.
Yeah, no, that brings up an excellent point that the task force had not discussed. I believe Supervisor Green has come in.
With the Chair's permission, I do have information on this. I did read the comment from Mr. Hall. When you follow cannabis regulation for any amount of time in California, it is ever-changing. And so I acknowledge that what was cited may have been a regulation at some point, but I'm looking at the current iteration of the regulations cited by Mr. Hall and the language is substantially different. So reading the current regulation that was cited as adopted most recently in June 2022. Number one, the most important sentence is that this particular provision is not applicable to licensees engaging in cultivation or cultivation-related activities. That's the last sentence of that phrase. But to the extent it would apply to other licensed activities, "All structures included as part of the licensed premises shall be permanently affixed to the land by a method that would cause the structure to ordinarily remain affixed for an indefinite period of time. Structures that are not considered to be permanent structures include but are not limited to shipping containers that are not affixed to the land, modular buildings that are not affixed to the land, structures that rest on wheels, or any structure that can be readily moved." But again, the operable phrase here is that this provision is not applicable to cultivation licensees. And that was Section 1 500.3 of the regulations, applicable to licensed cannabis cultivation activities, and it cites to Section 26013 of the Business and Professions Code and several other sections, starting with the number 26. And so the Business and Professions Code sections referenced in the comment letter are clearly outdated. So just wanted to make sure we're all playing by the same playbook.
Okay. And to add to that, there was some question. Holly and I had a dialogue last week where she was trying to find, it's referenced in Section 1, permit on page 2, Section 4 at the top, where it says project description, "Including proposed dates of usage and plans for structures outside the use dates and adherence to the Department of Cannabis Control's Guidelines for Temporary Hoop Structures for Cultivation." Holly was having trouble finding those guidelines. I think my Director maybe miswrote that and I would kind of recommend taking that Department of Cannabis Control Guidelines. What opened this up was actually the Department of Cannabis Control's amendments to their definition of outdoor cultivation, which removed light deprivation, which kind of opened up a path for structures that would allow for light deprivation for outdoor cultivators. So it's kind of a convoluted indirect guide, but that was the guidance there.
Okay. We did get something else from Jennifer Smith, but I see she's in the room. So when we get to public comment, maybe we can talk about her concerns and those of LCCA. But I do want to open it up to the Board right now, now that we've addressed those. Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing this to us, especially after we just had a conversation about it last week. I'm going to ask that staff make sure to review 1500.3 or 15,000.3F, just because I see a bunch of different iterations. The one that I'm looking at seems to say it's up to date as of April 14th, 2023, and reads differently than what was just read by Supervisor Green. I do see in the previous iteration in September 2021 that it did say it does not apply to cultivation, but I want to make sure that we're on top of that code and making sure that we're not doing anything against it. I don't think we are. It doesn't make sense, but at the same time, I'd prefer that we review that.
Okay, we definitely will. I, I believe a part of the reason why maybe it didn't come up in the discussion because we were basing the discussion on the amended DCC regulations, which went into effect January 1st, 2023.
Which allows hoop houses.
Yeah, that's where they changed and opened up these possibilities.
Right. And as far as the clear versus not clear, that's another change that has occurred as well as the state level for light deprivation to be allowed for those types of things. As long as there's not artificial light, it's not mixed light, it's still deemed outdoor. So I know those are complicated things to follow because it's ever-changing as Supervisor Green mentioned too. The surety bonds, I'm looking at our code here. Let me see if I can get back to it. Chapter 3 of our municipal code under agricultural and plant protection. If you look at Section 3-78, it has the code for hemp surety bonds. I think we copy and paste and maybe changed that amount, but what we had was $5,000 for less than 10 acres, $10,000 for more than or equal to 10 acres is what we had used for that. So I think that's, we have something that's already in existence. I think we can copy and paste and just make sure that it fits for what the needs are. And obviously, we anticipated a larger acreage amounts for hemp than we have currently on individual farms for cannabis. But that's one thing that I want to make sure that we do see in there. I just want to make sure it, I had to ask just to make sure that I was clear. This is a hoop house ordinance, not a cultivation, sorry, cannabis hoop house ordinance. And so this would apply to anyone else looking to install hoop houses for whatever their purpose of agriculture is. Because in there it adds that cannabis will have access to this as well. So that's the way that I read it. That's the way that I was informed based on my communication yesterday with the department. I just want to make sure that it's clear to everybody that that's what we're looking at. Granted, not many people use hoop houses for the type of agriculture that we have here locally at this moment in time, but just for those that do traditional ag to know that this is a conversation that they should be, and I do see now that the Farm Bureau is here, but that they should be actively participating in to make sure that that doesn't, that complies with what their needs are too. But that's, those are my comments for this.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. I think the Board's direction last week was clear that notwithstanding the holistic rewrite of the cannabis ordinance, we would like to see the surety bond made part of this ordinance. And so adding that language to fulfill that direction, I think, would be appropriate. And just anticipating some of the comments, a technical question on the spacing between hoop houses. I have to go back to the latest iteration of our current ordinance about the spacing required, for example, between raised planter beds. And I forget the exact language, but there is a requirement for spacing between planter beds, but there's also allotment for kind of grouping them together and stuff like that. So I was wondering if there was a, some possible language already in the ordinance as it applies to other types of growing structures that would give us some guidance there. So I hear what the comment is going to be made here today, like, you know, if, you know, can it be fields of hoop houses, stuff like that? Can we have, you know, throughways at some period as opposed to a three-foot distance between each darn row? But I have to remind myself what the current language is as it pertains to non-hoop structures such as raised planter beds. So more of a question than a comment. I just have to refresh my own memory as we have that discussion. Thank you.
Yes, to comment on that, we do have the three feet between the hoop house structures. And as they, as these permits come into our department and the Building Division reviews it, I believe it's going to be going to the Ag Commissioner and Fire District for review. The Fire Districts and their representatives had wished to see that 4290 compliance access to the surrounding canopy area where these would be put, would be in place. I think there was mention about 250-foot distance that would allow the fire hoses to kind of reach anywhere in the canopy. But in, I believe in that sense, that's where we're going to be looking at these on an individual basis to see if they fit these requirements. But if we want to add language with 4290 compliance to this, that is a possibility.
Supervisor Spatier?
Just want to mention, since that was brought up, I was going to wait for the Cannabis Alliance to make a comment on that. But putting hoop houses together complicates things in the sense of that there's a maximum of 75 feet from any point in the structure for an opening. And so at this moment in time, there was a request to allow for longer hoop houses. And that was for the berry hoops or things like that. But at the same time, you have to have an opening. And if you have them together, that means they could only be 75 feet length maximum. So that just, it means that we have to look at other things within the context of this ordinance that would complicate the ability to even put up a structure that meets the requirements that we have right now.
Yeah, and I believe the original recommendation, which is supported by the line before that, maximum height of 12 feet, maximum width of 20 feet, maximum length of 50 feet.
No, 100 feet.
Sorry. Maximum length of 100 feet, which would, you know, allows an understanding that there would be an opening on each end. So there would be a maximum of 50 feet to each exit. And if I remember correctly, that's what our chief building official had wanted. So I'm not sure if that 75 feet below it should read 50 feet.
Okay. And that means that if there are maximum of 100 feet, that no matter if they're right next to one another, that that's not a problem. next to one another, that that's not a problem. So apologize for that.
That is assuming an entrance at each end. If there was, one end was closed off and it was only one entrance, and it's a 100-foot structure, then you're exceeding that 75-feet distance.
Okay.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, oh, last thing. So again, that's not cannabis-specific. Obviously, the greatest interest is from the cannabis industry, but there are some applications, I'm thinking strawberries in particular, where there's small, relatively small patches of land, where it is basically covered with very, very small hoop houses. But they would be subject to the requirements of this as well. So we don't want to disadvantage current cultivation practices, I would call kind of on a much lesser scale than those envisioned by some in the cannabis industry. And we didn't raise that before, but I was wondering if there was something in a, for cultivation operations under a certain threshold. Again, going back to that three-foot barrier, you know, if we do that for a strawberry farm, that's definitely going to be an impact on them. So yeah, wondering if there's some language that we looked at for, you know, any greenhouse operation, I'm sorry, hoop house operation under a certain amount of square footage would not be deemed by the fire chiefs or anyone else to be a particular fire hazard or requiring a surety bond. But it'd be based on the size of the operation and the general understanding that that type of a low-hanging strawberry fruit or what have you wouldn't ever have any lighting in it, wouldn't have any, you know, they may not even be sticking them in the ground all that permanently, maybe just tent stakes. So there is some agriculture in the county that involves use of plastic sheeting that may or may not fall under the exact terms of this ordinance. So I just, we didn't raise that yet at the last week's meeting, but it occurs to me now. We definitely want to set standards that give clear guidelines for those that are going to make extensive use of hoop houses and plastic sheeting, but for those that are doing it on kind of a small-ball scale, I don't want to disadvantage those growers.
Anyone else on the board? All right, I will open it up for, oh.
Sorry. Sorry, just real quick, the surety bond, just to, just to be clear on it, you said it's not going to be in this version?
I think the recommendation from the board is to add the language from hemp to this ordinance.
Perfect, okay, just making sure.
I'm sure, speaking for myself, and I'm pretty sure staff would agree, we would support that as well.
Excellent.
No path to get bonds incorporated in our commercial cannabis activities.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I didn't, I heard earlier it wasn't going to, so then now we're good. But I, last thing is, last week, the fire chiefs mentioned something about Knox boxes. Is that, is there, did we talk about that yet, or?
Yeah, we did mention it. We, I guess, didn't make its way into this ordinance. It could. It's kind of, I'm not sure if it fits in here. You know, this is addressing one kind of single issue, and that's part of, you know, the broader safety for commercial cannabis operations, is to have that Knox box at the gate, so the Fire Districts have access to any site and have a site plan there as well, so that they can, once they're there onsite, they know what they're going into. It's, I guess the logic was that it didn't quite, that puzzle piece didn't fit into this part of the puzzle, I guess.
Okay. So it'll be implemented in something else, probably?
Yes, I hope so.
And I think it's an interesting part of the conversation, but I would suspect in the main ordinance, when that eventually comes back, that that seems to be a good fit when talking about the property and the activity on the property versus a type of structure, so.
Okay. We'll open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to come up, you can state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, good morning. Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for LCCA. I'd like to start by saying that I participated in all of the task force meetings, and it was not the scope of the task force's discussion to discuss all agriculture when we were talking about hoops. The directive was to discuss bringing the county policy into alignment with state law regarding cannabis cultivation. So it was never discussed at all that we were talking about applying these regulations to all agriculture. And if I put on my other hat, many of you know that I co-founded Good Farm Fund, which is a nonprofit that supports small food farms in Lake and Mendocino County. We give out grants, and the number one thing we grant for is hoop houses. And I can tell you, those hoop houses for food farmers are used year-round for season extension and crop rotation, and I wouldn't feel good about applying this to all agriculture, the language as written. So if it's being changed now, I think this is another thing that should require further contemplation, and it wasn't the recommendation of the task force that we would wish for these rules to be applied to all other food farmers and small food farmers. We've raised some concerns. I'll let Jen speak specifically to the letter we submitted around, there seems to be persistent confusion about what a hoop actually is. And the public comments and some of the concerns being raised continue to refer these, to them as structures. And we're really talking about putting umbrellas over our plants. That's what we need. And it's springtime, and we're heading into another cultivation season with our county laws out of alignment with state law, and farmers aren't able to create their site plans, purchase equipment. This is a really hard moment, and we don't have this right. And I know we're heading into spring, and we need the rules clear, but I think what we need to do is, is look more closely at what a hoop actually is, which is a very flimsy covering. It's an umbrella for your plants, and it's going to come down when you don't need it anymore. And this does not present a fire risk, this does not present a public safety risk. I think that the history has to be acknowledged that there have been trash piles of plastic and PVC all over the county and all over the state. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about regulated compliant farms, and unfortunately, I think those farms that are struggling to still stay in the legal market are burying the brunt of what history has created here. There has to be a better way forward, where we don't over-regulate every single umbrella. And we need to have some clarity soon. Our recommendation would be that we potentially take some of these items back to the task force and hopefully could come back with some quick responses to clarify some of these things, make sure the fire chiefs are comfortable, and find a way forward before it's too late. Thank you.
Anyone else in the chambers?
Good morning, everyone. Rebecca Harper, Lake County Farm Bureau Executive Director. I did just want to emphasize what Sarah mentioned. When we were discussing these regulations on hoops, we were not discussing them with the consideration that that would be applied to the food agriculture industry. I think that if these regulations were applied to that industry, it would be detrimental if the county is interested in encouraging diversification of food production in Lake County. That would definitely be a barrier for entry to a lot of vegetable and fruit growers. So I would also encourage maybe for, for this, to go back to the task force for some further consideration and to dig into this a little bit deeper. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
What is the rules and regulations for hoop houses for traditional ag?
So I'm not exactly sure. Andrew, maybe you can speak to that. I was under the impression that there weren't many, and that that was part of the right-to-farm ordinance and acknowledgement in Lake County. So I know that there is some limited food-based ag that utilizes hoops in Lake County, but to my understanding, none of those operations operate with something such as a three-foot distance between all hoops. You know, that significantly expands the footprint of an operation and the landmass that you have to have in order to have a farm that's, that's meeting production needs in an economically efficient way.
And I guess my, my question to the Farm Bureau would be, what's the problem with utilizing what exists and allowing cannabis to access it? We just gave cannabis access to ag exempt, and I could read you the right-to-farm, and I could tell you cannabis fits right in there because it's about ag products.
So, so I will just say, um.
But it just seems like.
Yeah.
We're creating something where there's already something in existence, and I don't want two worlds of.
I, I hear you completely. I will just say that on this item, there was not such disagreement between cannabis industry representation and traditional ag industry representation. Most of these regulatory changes that have been recommended were birthed out of conversation with the Fire Protection District and other public safety officials. So if that's a concern of yours, I would address it with those folks. That issue definitely does, does not lie with me or some of the other traditional ag representatives that have participated in the task force.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we'll go, we have some hands up.
You got one.
Oh.
Michael Wagner, thank you for bringing this stuff forward for everybody today. I think that there's a definite point that Bruno is bringing up about, are we treating it like ag or are we treating it like something else? And we've gone round and round about this for years. You know, I, I feel like you guys have the ability right now to change that cycle. You guys could say, hey, here's how we're viewing it, and we're going to stay consistent in that, and we're going to stop creating more time, time issues, time constraints, cost to the county by simply moving forward with it as ag. When it comes to creating more regulations for cannabis, every time you create a new regulation or an additional cost for a cultivator or anybody trying to participate in the legal market, you further reinforce the black market. You create another cost that the legal market has to carry, making it much harder to compete with the black market. Once, once the cost of production comes down, then you get rid of the black market. You're creating the problem by further regulating something that you've already spent the time and the money to regulate, meaning utilizing your agricultural ordinances. That's kind of big picture. Real quick, you know, Section 2, the hoop structure, design and development, the requirement to use PVC or plastic in those structures themselves seems counterintuitive when we are all looking at, and I think you guys as a group are really looking at what's good for the environment, what's good for the earth, and requiring people to use tons of plastic seems counterintuitive. Utilizing, whether it's aluminum piping or something that could be reused year after year, you cannot do that with PVC. You put it out in the sun, it's 120 degrees, you're not reusing it next year. It is garbage. And so the rule or the, the regulation or requirement to do that, again, seems counterintuitive with everything else you guys have been doing, which has been so significantly different and better. The surety bond issue, the DCC has that requirement already. I don't know if that would supersede or take care of that problem, but looking at the alignment of state law and local law, perhaps that issue's already been addressed. I'm not sure. And thank you for your time. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Andrew.
Would you like me to speak to some of those points?
I would, I would. And I have a question about the materials and how they've come up, because I know there are other materials on the market. I'm wondering what.
There was no intention to limit the cannabis cultivators to just using this one material. It was our chief building official who said, if you just went this one path, we saw no safety issues, because aluminum is quite heavy. It can come down, it can cause injury. Whereas PVC, at this height, with these dimensions, he felt, to some extent, I think his original advice was that you wouldn't need a building permit at all. However, we are bringing it through the temporary building permit process, so there will be some review. Should the cultivators wish to go in a different direction, they're free to do so, and they can bring their plans. We'll look at it and see whether a building permit is the best path or whether it warrants an amendment to the use permit. But, and also to speak to Rebecca and Sarah's comments, they are correct. The task force just focused on this use for cannabis, and that's kind of where the extent of my involvement is. It's kind of limited to the task force. However, all of these recommendations go on to the Agricultural Advisory Committee when relevant, and then on to the Planning Commission, and then here to Board of Supervisors. So as Marea took it through those steps, perhaps at the Ag Advisory Committee, that's where language was added to open it up to traditional agriculture as well.
Okay. Did you have a comment, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just real quickly, and maybe County Council can weigh in on this too. I think where we're at is, I think the cleanest way to address standards for hoop structures would have been in Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code. However, if we are intending to limit it to cannabis, as the title of this ordinance certainly implies and has, has been explained as the goal of the task force, seems more like these standards would end up in Article 27 as a performance standard or something like that. So that, that would maybe something to look at as accomplishing the limited scope of what was intended, keeping an eye that eventually we will go back to Chapter 5 and treat this as a truly applying to all type of agriculture thing, but clearly, we haven't thought about all the stuff specific to all types of agriculture. This initial discussion was focused on cannabis. So the question for County Council is if we were to send this back to the task force with some direction, might that direction be to take most of these same standards, if not all of them, but just take them out of Chapter 5 and maybe look for a place in Article 27 for them to live, at least for the short term that this is going to be applied?
And that can be a part of the discussion for the task force, so that can be part of the board's direction. Our office is also at a point where we are coordinating with the community, with community development to provide our suggested revisions based on the current drafts of this proposed ordinance. So just generally, the direction can be given to staff to further revise the ordinance, and that can be part of that.
One comment on that, concerning traditional ag, it looks like in Section 1, subsection 1C, that's really where there's some language that incorporates traditional ag. It reads, "In addition to those conducting agricultural operations, applicants with an approved cannabis cultivation permit from the County of Lake are eligible to apply for a temporary hoop structure permit." If you remove that first clause, that would essentially remove agriculture, traditional agriculture from the conversation, and that might be a good place to add language that says within the approved canopy area of an approved project. Does it, does that make sense?
That's where I was getting that from, is the intention seemed to cover more than just cannabis.
Okay, we have some more hands up. Patricia Lanier, you can unmute and state your name and have three minutes. You're muted still. Okay, we'll come back to you.
Hi there, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Just took me a minute to find the button. Hi, my name's Patty Lanier. I'm with one of your small farms, Noble Gardens, and I just want to thank the board for taking this item up and just, you know, ask that we, as much as possible, just be treated as agriculture, because that's what we're doing. A lot of us are growing food, a lot of us are also small food farmers in addition to being cannabis farmers and always have been. I'm a Prop 215 farm myself. We moved into the regulatory, we moved into the regulatory market willingly. We were one of the first applicants, and it has just been such a nightmare operating under these regulations ever since. And I just want to ask you to move the item forward, please. You know, don't make us wait anymore to get our season started and getting things going. We really, time is of the essence for us. If we're going to be allowed to do this, we've got to get started. I only plant 200 plants every year at the most, because I operate my farm with one other person. So, you know, in, in regulating everyone too heavily, you're really hurting the smallest of us the worst. So I do want to just thank everyone for all the time and energy that's gone into all of this. I know it's been hard, it's been hard for everyone. So that's about it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Nora Talbaka can unmute and have your three minutes.
All right. Hello, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thanks for taking us up again.
Thanks for taking us up again and for the thought that you're putting into it. Respect, currently serve as the cannabis industry-
Nora, can you just confirm your name?
Sorry, yes, Nora Dalbaka. I serve on the County Cannabis Task Force, and what we were dealing with in the task force is all in the name. We are there to deal with the cannabis ordinance. In the county, we were not making any decisions about ag and how that gets used. I think probably wouldn't need that task force if we were treated the same as the rest of the ag was. I'm a little troubled by this, by the idea of sending this back today, while there may be additional considerations that need to be taken on, and I don't think that anything is going to be harmed by letting this go forward with some of the farmers this year. As Patty stated, they're putting plants in the ground now that comes back to the task force. We'll miss this year, we'll miss the water savings and the potential benefits for the farmers as well as, as well as for the county in allowing folks to continue operating and in this, in this very difficult financial market. Hoop houses aren't a structure, they're a row cover that's primarily used to prevent frost prevention. They also happen to help with water consumption and the number of inputs that farmers need to use. But generally, something like that shouldn't trigger fire, egress, or separation issues at all, because the walls aren't solid, they're open air. So, I think there has been some conflation with people who wanted to use something that's shaped like a hoop for drying, but that's not what we're talking about today. We're talking about an easy up, essentially, that goes up to allow farmers to either pull tarps and get another turn-in or to decrease their water use. And I think, as somebody said very smartly, having one year of good rain is the equivalent of giving somebody who's in severe debt $500. It doesn't take care of the debt, that water is not replenishing our aquifers unless we get a couple of good rain years. So, I think we need to still be cognizant of taking water savings where we can. I think allowing farmers to move forward this year and then potentially having the task force look, look at this while still allowing farmers to move forward and use them this year isn't going to cause any kind of major environmental issue or a planning issue at all. It just, it gives another option. It's in the best interest of the county and the farmers, and I think that the task force would be happy to probably look at this. I don't think that we should be prohibiting farmers from using something this simple.
Thank you, Nora, your time's up.
All right, thank you.
Great. Phone 7257, if you want to unmute and state your name.
Good morning to you.
Yes, we can hear you. We're not able to actually hear you, you're breaking up quite a bit. Do you want to try back on a different line?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, shall I try it again?
Yes.
Thank you. Wagner, for acknowledging the, quite consistent, all of the task force meetings. What they want to see is ten feet between these structures for safety reasons and for the ability to fight fires should they occur. And I think this does need to go back to the task force, and the fire chiefs need to stay definitively what the safety concern is or is not. And I would hope that you supervisors would want to know that first and foremost. I don't know why the fire chiefs aren't here today to comment on that, but I think that they need to in order for all of us to know whether this is proper and safe. And to the cannabis industry, it seems that you think you're singled out for being treated, things made difficult for you. And I just want to remind you that in Lake County, for every fire survivor who rebuilt, it was this difficult. It did take this long. This isn't your industry, for you. It is hard in Lake County, it's very flammable here, we have rules we need to follow, we have safety regulations that are important, and we all have to do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay. The next caller is Erin McCarrick.
Hello, board, hello Chair Pyska, thanks again. My comments are real, real brief, basically echoing-
Erin, can you just confirm your name, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Erin McCarrick, Clearlake. I live in the city of Clearlake, own a cannabis distribution company, and I'm the vice president of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Real short, because Nora pretty much hit on everything that I was going to say, which is that the task force has been working diligently on this and this specific item, as with a few other items, beyond the overall revision of the ordinance, this was brought to the task force to fix sooner rather than later. So, I would just urge the board to just take their advice and the hard work that they've done. We are so, so lucky to have Maria and Andrew, who are working hard, and I just, I don't want this to break them. They've been doing so well, like, you know, they've been doing such hard work on this, and everybody on the task force has, the Farm Bureau, the fire chiefs, the public, the cannabis industry. So, echoing what Nora said, is to trust their recommendations and to get some of the sooner rather than later, and maybe if there's something where it's like, okay, let's have a check-in in December, or let's have a check-in after the season to see how the hoop house has worked with like, maybe some sort of, you know, amendment period. So, thank you so much again, and thanks.
Thank you. Lori Pascarella.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Lori Pascarella, and I'm a cannabis compliance specialist. And first, I'd like to thank Lake County Cannabis Task Force and all of those in the various other Lake County departments, particularly the Fire Department representatives, who worked tirelessly to bring this ordinance amendment draft before you, the Board of Supervisors, today. This amendment will update the Lake County cannabis regulations to bring them in closer alignment to those of the state of California, allowing the local industry to be more competitive in a difficult market. This proposed amendment will allow Lake County cannabis cultivators to have more environmentally and economically sustainable operations and to take advantage of the recent updates that are made into the regulations by allowing hoop houses and light deprivation techniques for outdoor cultivation. The updates to the state regulations clearly were made of recognition that this is more sustainable outdoor farming practices that are already in use in many other plant agriculture industries in California, such as berries, tomatoes, leafy greens, and other agricultural crops. And in reality, cannabis should be afforded all the rights and privileges of other, any other agricultural industry and not subject to yet more regulations, but better this ordinance to create progress for the cannabis industry than nothing at all. And I know that the industry is anxious and happy to work with you, as they have been with this task force. I'd like to make a couple of comments on the wording on one item under Number 2, the Hoop Design and Development Guidelines. It reads, "The structure is made entirely of PVC or similar tubing and a maximum of 10 mil of plastic or shade cloth." For temporary hoop structures, the use of metal tubing should really be considered not only similar tubing, but actually superior option for the use of the temporary hoop structures due to the fact that the metal, although initially more expensive for the operator, is actually much more reusable and recyclable and sustainable for use in hoop structures than PVC, which, because of the heat impact, tend to get one season use. They can be readily obtained in the durable metal piping and reused for years, if not decades, therefore much more sustainable. So, this should be really considered, even though it's not explicitly listed in the verbiage in this amendment. Sustainable farming is the primary goal in the use of temporary hoop structures. There's numerous studies that have proven that hoop houses reduce water use by a minimum, a minimum of 25%, but it also reduces electrical use, because you're not pumping that water. So, there's that consideration. It's more sustainable, not just in save water, but saved electricity. It protects your crops from drifting dust or other airborne particulate matter, thereby improving the quality and allowing it to be much more marketable. The use of temporary hoop structures should be encouraged through the implementation of an affordable streamlined permit process for cannabis operators. The permit fee should include any inspection fees, removal fees, and it should be a single permit utilized for multiple structures with a fee multiple fire for each added hoop.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a repeat of a hand in the Zoom room, but I want to give anyone else an opportunity that hasn't had to speak first. Come on up, Joan.
Joan Moss, I would like to know when cannabis became an agricultural crop. Last I heard, it was not considered agriculture. Thank you.
When people finally started reading the state code that says it's an ag product.
Okay, anyone else in the chambers before I go to some? Oh, we've got Damian Ramirez. Can unmute?
Hello, Damian Ramirez here, Lake County grown. First off, yeah, just a big thank you to Maria and to Andrew. They've done a lot of, lot of good work on this, and I know it's a really tough issue to tackle with all the input from everyone, but I tuned in to a majority of the task force meetings. There's representation from every, every concerned citizen, the fire chiefs. This was spoken about at length, and I think the ordinance that they're bringing forward to you is a quality, comprehensive ordinance. I would like to echo the sentiment that Lori previously spoke about, that, you know, the whole goal of this is sustainability when it comes to water, our drought, all those great points she brought up, and to have the materials used, you know, to be PVC and similar, similar material. First off, I'd like to find out from Andrew and maybe any of the board, how they read that, you know, because that's a very open-ended, and I know we've ran into some issues before when it comes to individual interpretation on certain items within ordinances. So, I think a more definitive language in there would be good, and the idea that metal wouldn't be allowed seems, seems counterintuitive to the whole goal of sustainability on every level that multiple people have already brought up. So, and as far as the fire hazard goes, I just want to remind everyone, these are, as Nora said, or I think Sarah actually said, you know, these are basically umbrellas over green belts. I mean, these are, this is planted green agriculture. These are things when you're developing communities, you're, you know, you're required to plant green belts. This is what these are. They're green plants. So, when it comes to the major fire hazard, it's really not, I don't think, as severe as some people like to paint the picture to be. So, once again, thank you to everybody, and I would love to hear some clarification on the language on that Number 2 when it comes to PVC and similar tubing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, to comment on that, if I remember correctly, our chief building official included the language of PVC for hoops that he saw would not require a building permit at all, including a temporary building permit. I note, we issue temporary building permits for a variety of different types of structures that use a variety of different types of building materials.
Okay. All right, we will go to our last two hands. We've got repeat callers. Patricia Lanier.
Oops. Hi, Patricia Lanier with Noble Gardens. Again, I just want to echo a little bit more of what the previous couple of callers stated, which is that other types of materials, upon review by the building department, should be allowed, because they are far more sustainable in the long haul for farmers. It's a one-time investment versus possibly having to replace pieces that become brittle and broken. And then, on the opposite side of that, in a task force meeting, just to let the public in general and people listening know, it was the fire chief specifically who wanted to implement just PVC, because it's such a lightweight material, that if there was a collapse, the person inside would be very unlikely to be hurt. And so, on both sides of that, all materials should be considered, because these are structures that are going over fresh, green, non-flammable plants, over ground that is being kept moist, the fire risk is very low. And again, we would like to remind everyone, these are not mixed light additions. There's no electricity going into these structures, and they're hardly structures. They're hoops that are not even necessarily secured into the ground on anything other than a staked footing. It's like a camping tent, essentially, is about how much staking or footing these things get, and they get taken down, because as an investor, as an owner, you're going to protect those materials through the wet season, because you want to use them again next year. So, I just want to offer that clarification to some of the concerns. The fire chief is in every single task force meeting, so he's not here today. He was the person that actually said PVC was what he wants to see. So, I just want to let everybody know that. I heard that come out of his mouth specifically.
Okay, and our last is phone 7257. Can you unmute yourself, please?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Time and again, in the task force and here today in the Board of Supervisors, we're hearing these farms referred to as mostly smaller scale, when in fact, Lake County has a much bigger vision to have some of the largest growth in the state. These regulations need to apply sensibly, equally, and be usable by all sizes of commercial cannabis endeavors. Part of the problem is access in case of fire. It's also the uniformity of how, what will these structures look like, risk of, could they fall on people? Yes, people will be in there. And I think there needs to be more clarity on the scale of what will work best for all, what will take. And I'm sorry that the cannabis industry feels so pressed, but I think it's important to get this right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Damon Ramirez, you have your hand up again.
Yes, thank you, Damon Ramirez. I apologize, I didn't include this in my initial comment. I just want to state the importance of getting this done as quickly as possible. There's been a lot of talk and discussions about this, and it's really, really important to the farmers to get something through today, so they can have a clear path. All we're doing is trying to align with the already established state laws. It's really that straightforward. I understand the drying structures, there's a lot more to it, and that's going to require a lot more conversation. This is pretty straightforward, and I'd really, really highly recommend that we try to get this done, so we can get this through, so farmers have a clearer idea of what's going on for this season, because it is here, and everyone's been waiting very, very patiently. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I am going to close public input and bring it back to the board. I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
That's what happens when you want the last word.
I don't want the last word. Jennifer Smith. This is a hot debate. You guys have received my letter. As we sit here, we keep rehashing some of the same things, PVC versus aluminum tubing. It's in the ordinance, and I have been assured by everybody that like material, PVC or like material would include aluminum. So, I think you can see by- So I think you can see by the other comments, that's a very important part. Like, I don't want to build my hoops out of PVC. I want to use aluminum. It's reusable, it's light. When we use PVC, we have to use at least inch and a half, which is actually very heavy. The discussion is frustrating in that, you know, we're talking about row covers, and we're talking about, you know, berry hoops that you see throughout all California agriculture. And if we are going to encourage other food sources to be grown here in, in Lake County, I worry that we are going down a path that's going to be prohibitive for that crop as well. So, and the other issue is this three-foot separation is what's causing a lot of grief. And now we're at, being asked to add within the approved cultivation site plan or area already. So now you're going to diminish the production area for a farmer that's already been developed. It's going to be diminished because now we're taking away three feet for every hoop that they want to plant. So there's a lot of consideration to be made. Do we want something passed? Absolutely. Like, the time is ticking. I know that this is going to have to have a second reading. It's not going to go into effect for another 30 days. We're missing a significant part of the hoop season in, in cannabis. So while I, I do want this passed, I want us to make sure that we're looking at truly what these are. They're berry hoops, they're cover, they're row crop coverage, they're open on the sides. They literally fold up in an accordion, like a slinky, and get set on a rack and put back into storage. So I want us to make sure that we're really, like, looking at what we're talking about and see how we can marry both versions, because I think we do get stuck with this historical reference point of hoop houses on sides of hills with plastic falling down that are, you know, ubiquitous with illegal cannabis farms. So I just want us to find a way to marry the, the time needs as well as bring in all of the needs that both cannabis and traditional ag would want. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm closing public input and bringing it back to the board, and I don't know who had their pen up first here.
You choose.
Supervisor Green.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, there's a need for speed. There's also a need to get it right. I, I think, I think we can do both here today. And, uh, but I'm going to be relying on county council for a little bit of advice here. I think if we just label this a little more robustly, we aren't going to make any substantial changes to the intended scope of this ordinance. And without debating the spacing and all that, you know, it is the recommendation of the task force. Obviously, people are going to agree or disagree with this, this point, but to the, to major point, can we move this to, forward today? I think we can. And one possible way to do that is just clarify, as stated in, in the title of this, that this is going to apply to cannabis cultivation. I would add the word "commercial cannabis cultivation." We're not intending to apply this to personal cultivators of cannabis who fall under the personal use exemption. We're not intending to apply it to other forms of agriculture, and that very clearly was the intent when we gave direction to the task force to take this up, and it's what the task force brought us back. So starting with the title, if we amended that slightly to put "commercial cannabis cultivation," if we went down to Section 1 and made clear in the title of 6.25 that we're talking about temporary hoop structures for commercial cannabis cultivation, that would clarify that. And then if we were to look on bullet item four under that same heading, project description, that project description would include some description of adherence. Food Department of Cannabis Control, I don't think guidelines is appropriate, but statutes, regulations, and/or guidelines applicable to temporary hoop structures as may be amended would also make clear that this whole process is only going to be open to commercial cannabis growers with a county permit, and those that are also adhering to all applicable regulations or guidelines of the Department of Cannabis Control as it applies to temporary hoop structures. Those are not just cosmetic changes, I think, but they would clarify the intent that we are only talking about an ordinance that applies to our commercial cannabis growers. I think everything else rides just fine. I do think the current language would allow for the use of aluminum framing, but if there's any question on that, I'll defer to staff on clarification on that. I think we can move this forward. I think we should move this forward. Our growers have been asking for some clarity on this for some time. I think the task force has done the lion's share of the work. I think it'll be a living change to our ordinance, and eventually we will be taking a look at small-scale food production and stuff like that. And to be very clear, I'm not a fan of hoop houses. I, I am sensitive to the current spacing requirement as requested by the fire chiefs. Yeah, you're growing green plants within them, but when the embers are getting cast from a loud fire, they're going to be landing on that plastic. And I'm, I'm sensitive to that. I'm also sensitive to the idea that those plastics, even if the frames are renewable, the plastic is not. So I know it's very common in the cannabis cultivation industry. I know it is used to some extent in other forms of agriculture, but it's not a preferred usage in my mind. It's a balancing act between improved water efficiency, but it is not without impacts. So I would like to see this move forward if it's possible with some of the changes I just introduced or proposed as possible ideas. I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues, of course, on their thoughts.
Supervisor Spatia.
So a couple of things. I kind of left at a comment that you made because the idea of being environmentally friendly because of the tubes and ignoring the 2,000 square feet of plastic wrapping just kind of seemed a little ironic, but it's an economic issue, is what I'm understanding it to be more so than an environmental issue, which makes sense because we, we want to make sure that this is a viable industry and helping out in the economics of it is, it should be a part of the conversation. So just real quick, the tubing, a lot of people said similar material. That's not the word that's in there. It's similar tubing, which to me means something that looks like a tube should work. It doesn't have to be similar to PVC, it just says similar tubing. That is the way that I read that, and that, to me, is the intent of the way it's written is to, something that helps create the hoop, not similar material of tubing, because that's not what it says. It does not use the word material. I really don't want to complicate things. I know originally when I brought this to bring to the task force, the idea is there are zero regulations when it comes to hoop houses. Some of them make sense, and I don't think would ever impact our traditional ag in a sense, but at the same time, we did approve last week that cannabis is finally going to be under ag exempt. As far as I'm concerned, that pretty much means they can do hoop houses today. What, I mean, if you could build a barn ag exempt, but you can't put a hoop house, we're, we're complicating things way too much. It's really strange to me that that's, that, we didn't even put a limit on the size of the barn that you can build if it's ag exempt, but we're going to have this very tedious conversation, and I feel like, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not picking on people, and I'm going to name names, why should I trust Ms. Harper but not trust Ms. Smith? It seems like that's the conversation we're having. You can have a hoop house, but for you, here's what we're going to do. So to me, we could walk away today, and I feel like you already have access to that because we're, we approved that you are ag exempt based on state law that says ag product and ag exempt is about ag product. So I'm confused why we keep, it, it would be so much easier to look at farming as farming. Certain farming has a nuisance, such as the odor from cannabis. That's why we have setbacks. We also have zoning. Is, are you telling me that no matter where ag, traditional ag is done, that the scenic corridor does not apply to them, and that they can put hoop houses for miles and miles and miles? So I think that certain things are needed to talk about for safety purposes, for just visual purposes, and I, I think that, again, I'm not the county council here, but I'm thinking that if it's ag exempt, we can let it be, and it's accessible, and come back with something that's acceptable for both traditional ag and cannabis so that we don't mess up our food production and our other farming, but we do create things that make sense as to why they're there in the first place. I do want to create some sort of safety measures because I don't want people getting hurt in there, but has that happened in the recent past that I'm aware of? No, yes, we've had issues with some of our pesticides. I've definitely heard that comment made from Chief Cepeda. We want to make sure those things are done appropriately. We want them to have appropriate access to their properties so that they can go in while people are trying to go out, but it just seems like we're continuing to complicate something when the setbacks are for the nuisance that's created by the situation of cannabis, but the rest is still farming. And I don't know, I just feel like we're already there, and we're just having a very long discussion for something that right now people could have built a whole bunch of hoop houses on traditional ag, and nobody would be asking questions. And I, I question that. Why, why are we not asking questions for one, but we're sitting here for almost an hour to discuss for the other? So I, I'm, I don't mind the idea of regulations. Again, let's look at what traditional ag is using in our community, and let's build our regulations based on what already exists and what is needed for that to work, and let's see how we can combine that, because I just don't see the difference, and I think it's just, it, it feels like we're continuing to build rules and regulations based on we don't want to trust. And well, then why have the industry here if that's the case? Not that I'm saying let's get rid of the industry, but I'm just, it, it confuses me because I think it's the wrong place to start the conversation from.
Do we have anything from any other supervisors?
I know there were some questions that Michael Green asked county council, and I'd like to hear the answer.
Yeah, so mainly procedurally, at a first, and this is what's presented before the board as a first reading of the ordinance. The board can make amendments to the draft ordinance and proceed with the first reading of the ordinance as amended. The other option is to direct staff to finalize the ordinance with the changes that's being, that, that was raised by, by the board via consensus, and then staff can then come back in a, in, in one week with a finalized version of the ordinance for the first reading. And from our end, from our office's end of things, we do have some revisions upon review, reviewing this ordinance this past Friday. We forwarded these suggested revisions to Director Turner Monday, I believe, because it was, we just received it on Friday, and, and we can continue those conversations with them under that second option. Under the first option, we could propose what we have, what our office has as far as revisions go, suggested revisions, line, line item. Much of them are mostly minor revisions, just cleanup matters. There are some that, that warrant some clarification in order to have the, this proposed ordinance in order to have it, to have that, some sort of internal consistency within the ordinance themselves, and that, that's where we are, but the board does have the discretion to, to go one way or the other between the two options.
So real quick question, some of the things you're seeing, would, would those amount to substantive changes that would require us to go back next week and do a first reading then as opposed to proceeding today?
It can be construed as such. I know one example is the bond issue. If that, if language needs to be incorporated, that would be a substantive change unless there's language ready to go now to be added by way of an amendment to this ordinance, then that would fall under the, the sec, the, the first option that, that I provided, which is we could place the amendments here and proceed with the first reading as amended, first reading of the ordinance as amended, that those would need to be put on the record to move on to the second reading of the ordinance. So if they, it, the, the practical, potential practical effect to that would be if there's a lot of amendments going in, substantive amendments going into the ordinance, it might cause some level, some degree of confusion, so that the other option might be, might be ideal, but that is up to your board.
Supervisor Crandall.
Just real quick, the surety bonds, couldn't that be just basically transposed from the hemp? I mean, I think there's language there that, or would it need to differ because of?
It could be, and then you would have to, language would have to be added to this proposed ordinance that would incorporate it by reference. You know, that would be a part of the substantive amendment.
My suggestion, and I'm just trying to get some consensus here, is I think that, you know, nobody's fault, but I think we'll probably have to kick it back for some substantial amendment language, which will require us to bring it back next week. Want to reaffirm, if possible, the consensus we made last week that we would like the surety bond language in there. It sounds like we may need more consensus that we are very specifically limiting the scope of this ordinance to our commercial cannabis cultivators. And I didn't see any other things that we needed to kick around for consensus, but open to ideas if, if we had consensus on those two items to bring back the surety bond language and limit the scope to commercial cannabis cultivation. Certainly open to bringing it back next week with those amendments, and I think Director Turner would benefit from having that time, too. She's not available to be here today to kind of give her input on that, so I'd also like to hear from her.
Supervisor Spatia.
I, I was just going to say, I don't think we should reference it since it's specific to hemp. I think it should probably be copied and pasted to, that, that's just, it doesn't make sense to reference hemp in a cannabis cultivation thing. I think that might make things confusing, so, because it's not a standalone surety bond for just calling it out from our code, it's specific to hemp. And as I mentioned, our office has some cleanup revisions that we'll work with, staff with.
Okay, can, vice chair.
So agree with the, you know, being specific to cannabis cultivation, I thought the suggestion of adding out the NC in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, trying, you know, just to make it specific. And yeah, obviously the surety bonds, I know there's a discussion, I think we have it there, but Supervisor Spatia, I completely agree with you. And, and I've heard a couple times, both from the industry and even from this board of getting it right, and like I said, it's changing all the time. There is no getting it right. What we're trying to do is take step forwards, you know, each little step we're trying to do to help establish the industry. So I think even all the six years I've been on are getting it right. It's constantly changing, so we're trying to take those steps forward, and hopefully we can come back with something that'll allow us to do that. It is one more week away from the growing season, so we all realize that, so.
Consensus to bring it back next week with the surety bond? Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And specific to cannabis cultivation.
Yes. Do we have consensus on that? Okay, I'm just figuring out if we've got, are we, are we going to have it cannabis specific?
I mean, I'll just say again, why a surety bond for a green, for a hoop house solely for cannabis? We, we, we have no trust, so I just, I, I get stuck there. We know there's other hoop houses out there, but we trust those people. I, I just, to me, that, that, that makes it difficult for me to continue moving forward. I think the easiest way to move forward is to do something that makes sense for everybody and kicking it back and saying, hey, figure it out. Come to a consensus of what ag wants because cannabis is ag, so let's stop splitting the hairs and recognize that we're choosing and picking who should have more difficulties rather than making a overall comprehensive look at what ag needs.
Andrew, did you have something to add?
Just one comment, and, you know, I sympathize with your point of view. However, for ag exempt structures, they do not allow for human habitation or employment, and in these structures, there will be people working.
But somehow, it's already accessible to that industry. So, but there's some other form that allows that. That's where I get confused. We're, we're okay with that, and I'm okay with that, but we're not okay with it for others.
Well, if I can just respond, I, I totally get that the cannabis industry is overregulated, but, and, and we're peeling off layers of regulation as we go, but this is the burden. We have to pay it forward, have been paying it forward for six-plus years. Don't see any reason that a fairly simple requirement for surety bond should not be Don't see any reason that a fairly simple requirement for surety bond should not be imposed. Yeah, we trust, but we verify. And if we have an abandoned series of hoop houses, we don't want to be on the hook for cleaning that up. There are maybe not as substantial environmental violations potential as some other activities, but it's clearly there. The reason the state implies, requires a surety bond is so that if any licensed activity is occurring under their watch, result in violations, there's money available to clean it up. That state surety bond does not cover any requirements imposed by the county. So if the county is going to enforce the requirements in the ordinance, including the requirement to safely remove any materials, the county, the surety bond issue to cover the activities covered in the county ordinance will be sufficient to cover that. And we have plenty of examples in this county of code enforcement where we have no ability to recover costs other than some expensive lien process and stuff like that. A surety bond is not expensive. It may be perceived as overregulation. But when we come back and take a look at hoop houses for ag in general, maybe that's the time we can kind of revisit that. I imagine we will at that time. But for right now, I do recall that there was consensus last week to impose that requirement. I think it was reasonable at that time, and I think it's still reasonable today.
I'm okay with bringing back the surety bond. It, we don't have an issue with traditional ag and excessive plastic. And we don't, that has not been an issue in our county before. And so that's why I'm, I'm okay with this. I do want to get this right, but I also want to finish this next week so we can give our farmers the chance they need for this season. Is there anything else before we get a motion to continue this?
Is it a motion to a date and time certain?
I'm looking at Deputy Quirk. How about 1:30?
How about it? Do it, does it need to be date and time certain?
That's County Council, could respond to that?
Yes.
Do I mean have to read the calendar? What am I looking at, May 2nd?
May 2nd at 1:30.
All right. Madam Chair, if there's no further comment, I move we continue this item to a date and time certain being 1:30 PM on May 2nd for continued consideration of this ordinance.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. One more week. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating today. Yes, we will take a break and come back at 11:00 AM. Seven minute break. 6.6, all right, welcome back. 6.6, our 11:00 AM item. Consideration and discussion of a special joint meeting with Lakeport City Council. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Number one, appreciate the coaching on process I get. So many things we need to talk about and finding out the timing and the place and the proper venues to speak about things can be challenging, especially for a still rookie supervisor like myself. But I do represent District 4, which has both the city of Lakeport fully within that district and then the unincorporated portions of the district to the north and south. And we have interests of concern that span the city and county borders. One issue of concern that has concerned me greatly for at least a couple of years, both while I was on the Lakeport City Council and now that I'm sitting here as a District 4 supervisor, is fire safety, including fireworks safety in particular. There is a particular challenge on that issue and and no clear path toward resolving it and how to even highlight that issue. There's other issues that we share too. For example, thankfully, we finally, as a county, worked successfully and collaboratively with the city in proposing an annexation that would, among other things, allow us to provide water service and fire hydrants to the industrial sector of South Main Street. Unfortunately, the voters weighed in on that and rejected that annexation proposal. So that leaves us kind of either twiddling our thumbs or considering next steps on what is admittedly a complicated process. But I feel a need for urgency to progress on that. You know, notwithstanding the difficulties of annexation, special districts, Prop 218 procedures and all that, we need to move forward on that. And so a special joint meeting can be a way for bodies to meet and identify areas of concern, possibly give staff direction to pursue this or that project, maybe to consider other alternatives like ad hoc committees on special projects and what have you. So I tried and probably failed to express some of my concerns as a supervisor and some of the concerns of my constituents outside the city of Lakeport on fireworks safety in particular last week. I don't think there was a whole lot of traction or forward movement on that, although I'm, I stand ready to be corrected if something is changing there. But I need to initiate a meaningful discussion on fireworks in particular, the movement of so-called safe and sane fireworks across the city border, the movement of illegal fireworks into the city of Lakeport and the, in this, I don't know, just to talk about the issue. And it's like, well, why would we talk about it in a joint meeting? Well, because apparently we haven't talked about it in recent memory, ever. Case in point, we're accepting public comment now on hazard mitigation planning. Comments due May 1st, haven't seen that, that particular process is mentioned fireworks at all. Lake County Community Wildfire Protection Plan adopted May 2022. Not one word of fireworks in that whole document. City of Lakeport Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, July 2019. The fireworks word doesn't appear at all. So even in our existing standing processes where we should be coming together and collaborating on issues of fire safety, somehow fireworks just didn't quite get into that narrative through multiple planning processes. So I'd like us to at least address that particular issue. And then, as I mentioned in the staff memo, there, there were other things that aren't really problematic, other than we're trying to figure out how to work together. So on another agenda item today, we are going to be talking about extending the emergency warming shelter. We do need to build a bridge strategy and a shelter crisis report and plan that will take us beyond that extension, hopefully, and create interim sheltering options for unhoused individuals. I know the county is very interested in that, and I know that our city partners are very interested in that as well. So I just want to identify some areas of key concern that I think having sometimes a little heart to heart can be useful, where we have issues spanning multiple jurisdictions. I'm also open to the idea that there are other avenues short of a joint meeting to effectively engage on these subjects and other subjects that may be of concern by my colleagues here on the board. So with that, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I think we have things that we can and maybe should talk about between our respective boards and council. I'm also open to the idea that people might have, might want to pick and choose which, which issues to talk about and in what venues and what time we talk about it. Because I know special meetings can be a pain to set up and, and staff and what have you. So I just want to leave it on that. I see Cedar Manager Ingram here and Police Chief Rasmussen. I appreciate them being here and certainly would be open to any comments they wish to offer, as well as those comments of staff and my colleagues. So thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. There's always a lot of issues that cross those imaginary lines that we've created. That's never gonna stop. That's always a constant, whether it's water, whether it's fires, whether it's crime, whether it's anything else. But I, the idea of a special joint meeting, to me, is more of a final destination than a beginning point. That's when we have something that's been coordinated and discussed and put together to bring to both of the city council and the board of supervisors to say, yes, we agree or we disagree on this final product that's been created. There's nothing that prohibits you from having conversations with each individual council member or the staff of Lakeport to, in, in order to produce those types of final results that then maybe can create a special joint meeting. And if that's the case, then just like we have, and I think I've been to two. One was for the Robert Eichler, is that, did I say that last name? Eiler, was because we paid for a study and we were all given the report together, all three jurisdictions. And then the last one was for the annexation. But as far as, I mean, as far as fireworks, you, you mentioned a lot of those things, the CWPP, the mitigation, hazard mitigation. And to me, I mean, we can ban matches, we could ban lighters, we can ban fireworks. The idea is we got to reduce the fuel. And then that helps to reduce the potential. There's so many reasons fires happen that I don't think that we should have a conversation where there's not a final product in front of us as far as what to do, to just have an open discussion in a joint meeting session. I would actually suggest in, in, in a very probably offensive way, would be a complete waste of time for staff and for us to dedicate a discuss, open discussion versus those discussions happening in private and then bringing a solution for us to review that's been accepted by both sides. I just, to me, you have that capability to build those relationships with the city and build those relationships with the council. I believe there was, just speaking on the fireworks, I believe Councilmember Costa was in agreeance with you. I would suggest work with Kim Costa and, and see what comes out of that conversation. And eventually, maybe it does lead to a joint special meeting. But I, I don't see the, I don't see that helping. It, it's like starting a discussion with a blank slate in today's conversation versus here's an option of an ordinance that's in front of you so we can discuss it. And I think that those things can occur without the need for us to say yes or no as far as your discussions with the city of Lakeport, just like my discussions with the city of Clearlake. I have discussions with council members and the city manager more than once on a weekly basis. And eventually leads to solutions that we can do, sometimes doesn't have to come back to a board. So that would be my suggestion. I want to make sure that staff time and our time and the public's time is utilized in the best and most efficient of ways. And if it's going to be an open discussion and dialogue that eventually leads to nothing, I, I'm not in favor of moving in those directions. I want a final product that have been worked on and discussed by both sides to be brought to us rather than an open discussion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, and we have done ad hoc committees, sat on the ad hoc committee for the, and I'm gonna get it wrong, probably this, not the South Deal Committee, the South Main Street Committee with your predecessor, Tina Scott. You know, as we moved through the process when it first started. And then I think, was it you, Supervisor Pesci, who was on it in the end? Or was I the only one at the end? Maybe it all wrapped up before she moved on. But, you know, I know that, you know, we had many meetings, talked through those processes and were able to bring a final product, you know, it wasn't successful. But, you know, the city of Lakeport is wanting to get that done. We very clearly understand that, and I know there may be other iterations. So we'll continue trying to have those conversations. As far as the fireworks, it's very clear, the county and the unincorporated areas, I don't have the number of the, but it is not allowed in any unincorporated areas in Lake County. So the county is, you know, has made that decision. I think the state fire marshal works with any city that decides that they're gonna do that. And that's where the application get, comes from. I could be corrected on that, but the state fire marshal, if a city wants to do that, that's how they do it for any activities that are done. And I think it's all done for fundraising right now. I think at least every boot that I've seen up is for one fundraiser or another, how the applicants get that out there. So we'll challenge, you know, there, but that's up to the city to really make that decision. The, the unincorporated county, which we have purview over, has already made that decision. So I think that may be why you don't see anything in the CWPP or anything else. We've already said, no, that, that isn't gonna happen. So from our purview, we've already made that decision for the unincorporated areas. And, you know, ultimately working together with the cities, but they make their own decisions. They have their own boards and they go from there. So and we want to respect that sovereign, sovereignty that they have. Yeah, from, from my point of view too, since we've been on here trying to work together is always something we try and do, but I agree with Supervisor Sabatier. It's kind of, gotta be specific so we could have an outcome that is positive instead of just having a meeting. Because we can meet with ad hoc committees or others and have those discussions and trying to bring something to the board. And also our admin, our CAO, being that link between the cities. You know, we really rely on those conversations happening. And, you know, obviously, any of the city managers or things like that, trying to bring those to the board in the support of whatever supervisor it is. Obviously yourself and Supervisor Sabatier have that city link that none of us do here in the other places. So yeah, I do a little bit.
Yeah, you do.
But Bruno's the one that meets every week, so we go from there. But yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
Did you have anything?
I know we meet in different capacities. For example, the recreation, you know, committee that we're on as well. I do agree with the ad hoc committees. I know that with the annexation that took place. I know that at times there have been meetings with specific municipalities on my end. And I do like the idea of when it comes to a path forward, then we'll meet together. You know, not a path forward, but the actual decision or the finalized of the discussion that needs to be addressed can be brought here.
Yep. I agree. I think, you know, we're always willing to be collaborative with our cities, but we have to respect their jurisdiction and the councils and the decisions that they make. We have a lot of ability to work with them in different areas. We, we do have the Recreation JPA, we do have the Risk Reduction Authority. We do meet regularly. And, you know, as Vice Chair Simon said, fireworks are illegal in the unincorporated areas of our county. And I do encourage you to have those heart to heart meetings with the city manager, with the police chief, with the fire chief, and do that work on behalf of your district and your unincorporated city. So if there's anything else, I can open it up to the public now.
If I can just respond briefly to the board's comments, now we can open it up. I, I appreciate the normal process, but there's also a need for speed. Can I speak to every council member? No, Brown Act, right? So I can, I could.
You can, you can speak to every single council member. You just can't have a serial meeting with them.
We'll go back to the Brown Act primer. But to the notion that on paper fireworks are illegal in the county, yeah. My point is, which I made Tuesday and I'm gonna make here now, what's, what's law on paper and what exists in real life in my district and in the city of Lakeport has no semblance to reality. Fireworks are discharged in the unincorporated county. Fireworks sold in the city of Lakeport leave Lakeport and go to places in our county and are discharged there, are stored there. They may be safer or saner and legal within the city, but the minute they cross the border, they become illegal. We have constructive knowledge of this. My reasonable suspicion is actual constructive fact if people are gonna be honest in this community. And I have a duty to do everything I can to understand sovereignty and respect it, but also understand circumstances that represent a clear and present danger to not just the people in my district, but to people in other districts as well. There is a disconnect between the fireworks policy in the city of Lakeport and the county. And I understand it's complicated and I know there's some history to it, including the industry sponsored initiative that was passed in 2009 courtesy of the good friends at the fireworks company that put that forward. I understand there were other considerations as well, including fundraising. I have a secondary concern that it's not super equitable what, what happened with that 2009 ordinance. We do have some nonprofits that, that do good work and certainly has nothing to do with them. And I'm not against any people that are benefiting from that and doing good work with, with that money. But there are other nonprofits in Lake County after COVID that are just struggling to hang on. And they don't have the ability to put together a whole year's budget based on a week of fireworks sales. But, but to the notion that we have addressed this meaningfully as a city or county, I don't think taking a meeting here or there, when I've been doing that for two years and failed on the council. failed on the council, is going to be a good use of time necessarily. And maybe the best I can do in this sense of urgency is as we approach this next summer season, this next fire season, this next large scale fireworks event in the city of Lakeport, whatever venue it might be, let's have some honest discussions about where those fireworks are actually going after they're sold, where they're actually being discharged, whether those large scale fireworks events in the city of Lakeport and the city of Clearlake for that matter tend to be an attractive nuisance that bring illegal fireworks into the town where they're discharged. There's just a lot to unpack in there. And I don't know, I don't have a way to get there through the normal political process or the normal, you know, ad hoc, if we're all just going to defer to the sovereignty of the city to do whatever it does without having any requirement to speak to the larger community, to answer to the larger community. Because I tell you what, people in my district who don't live in the city have a very different review of fireworks than those that do live in the city. I'll leave it at that now. I do want to accept input from people in the public.
Supervisor Sabatier.
While I don't disagree of the potential issues, I I I do want to caution you that if you're not able to get meaningful discussion within the city of Lakeport and its leadership, that using the Board of Supervisors as a stick to get change done in other jurisdictions is not the healthiest way to move forward. And it feels like that's the request that you are making of us and I would be very uncomfortable with putting myself in that situation rather than having a face to face discussion and understanding how we can do better, not understanding how we can overpower.
Okay, public input. If there's anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and speak, state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport. I I think we can separate the importance of the issues. I think there's although, all the issues that have been brought forth in in the memo prepared by Supervisor Green, I think they're all very important issues and and require, you know, further discussion, collaboration. I just don't think that the joint meeting, I would go with what Supervisor Sabatier said, that that can be an end goal. I think there are absolutely appropriate times for joint meetings. We've had those in the past, they've been very successful. But I would argue that there's more planning effort that needs to be put into these items. I think greater success on many of these issues happen through these ad hoc committees. I mean, I I think a lot of the work and the collaboration that we've been doing for the Navigation Center, you know, the city's trying to take a greater role in the the county COC, you know, participating more with monthly meetings with Behavioral Health, you know, that that kind of path moving forward, the the JPA for the Rec Center was also noted as an example. I'm I'm certainly open, I mean, there's no one going to argue from the city of Lakeport that illegal fireworks are not an issue and that safe and sane fireworks probably have some sort of role to play in there. But I don't think that, you know, we've we've constantly had an aggressive program to try and go after those and I'm more than open to look at different things. You know, Chief Rasmussen and I have talked about, you know, the idea of sitting down with the sheriff and other other fire chiefs and talk more comprehensively about, you know, a plan for in the future. I think that's probably a more viable process than a joint meeting at this time. But we can, we can go there, but I think I think the joint meeting should be, you know, two or three steps down the line, not not the first action. So more than happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'll go sit down.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers?
Thank you for being allowed to speak. I'm Lisa Wyler again. One important thing that I might comment on, I own the property at 32 Sota Bay Road, directly across the street from Jack in the Box. My family has owned this since 1957, so we have a longstanding history of all of that corridor out there and things that have or have not happened. We have not had, knock on wood, any sort of fire brought on by fireworks out there. I do know that I have not heard fireworks around me during these times. My concern is the field that is next to me, that is owned, the property that's owned by the fire, the theater is never required to mow that complete land. So weeds are high, weeds are dry, and we actually have been in charge, we have every year mowed a number of yards or feet, what would you say it is that we mow? Probably 30 feet of his property that borders ours so that there's a safety there between us. And he occasionally has mowed perhaps, you know, a couple swaths next to the road and into his property along bordering the road, Sota Bay Road, but not into the area. Now, if you look at it, there's high grass right at the border of his parking lot, which if people were going to go out in that area and shoot off fireworks, that would be one of them, I would assume they would do. I have not noticed that. But that would be of concern if a firework set off in that parking lot were to go north, hit the field, that would go up. So my plea would be maybe the fire department, I don't know who would, has jurisdiction over requesting that, but requests that he take better care of mowing that dry grass and keeping that that tapped down for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we will move to Zoom. Betsy Khan, you can unmute and state your name and have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Betsy Khan for the Essential Public Information Center. First of all, I want to thank Supervisor Green for bringing all these concerns forward to you. We have gone through decades of this risk being discussed every single year at the city council and we understand all of the benefits and and perils of its pursuit. But I can tell you that there is almost zero enforcement in the unincorporated areas for fireworks. We've had many, many near calls, visitors staying at shoreline properties, enjoying their own fireworks off of docks that have been documented as being nearly set on fire last weekend. Where I live here in Upper Lake, there were people setting off fireworks, sounded like M80s to me. And this whole discussion about the valley people and the threat to fire is is so enormous. I would like to just ask one question, please, of Supervisor Green, I believe you used the word approved when you referred to the CWPP saying it was adopted in May of 2022. As far as I know, it has not been adopted, it is still in draft form and there is no no non, no known deadline for completing that. It's of tremendous importance to me and to the people that are supporting that. The other thing I would say is that the issues about these fireworks and the the water issues and all of the issues related to this certainly could be taken up by the Risk Reduction Authority, which has the members of the city managers present and is a is a multidisciplinary, multi-jurisdictional problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I I think it's important to always remember that we, you know, fireworks are illegal in the unincorporated area, all fireworks, including the ones that would be considered in the city of Lakeport. And so I think that last caller referenced probably illegal fireworks that wouldn't have been sold within the city of Lakeport anyway. And that is a law enforcement issue with our fire protection districts. I think it's separate and apart from the safe and sane fireworks discussion that the Lakeport City Council has. Call caller 6205.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. In your district Supervisor Pesca in the Riviera, there are elaborate fireworks set off at New Year's, sometimes at Thanksgiving, sometimes at Christmas.
Okay, but I, the issue that Supervisor Green has brought up is the sale of safe and sane fireworks in the city of Lakeport. And so I think having, you know, talking about fireworks displays throughout the year and outside of the district is something different.
Isn't, it isn't something different because fireworks are readily available in the city of Lakeport, they are easily accessed by people all around Lake County and you cannot pretend that it isn't a problem of flammability in a county that's already 65% burned. So you you just can't shove this under the rug. I appreciate the awareness coming to this year after year. Because fireworks are readily available in Lakeport, they are easily gotten, easily used. We have no enforcement, we don't even have patrols. The one thing that I think has been set up that sounded like a a great step was Chief Rasmussen, I believe, set up specifically monitored ignition areas. What about that? What about being more strong in making clear to the public that you can only set off fireworks where there are fire truck monitoring?
I I think we're getting off topic here. This was a discussion about.
Joint meeting.
A joint meeting and not a discussion about fireworks. So I'm going to have this caller stop so that we can get back on topic and bring this back to the board as I don't see any other hands up in the Zoom room or anyone else in the chambers. So again, the topic was joint meeting with the city of Lakeport and one of the items was to discuss the safe and sane fireworks that are sold within the city. So bringing it back to the board for final comment.
Well, since there doesn't seem to be consensus for a special point meeting and I didn't agendize the any alternatives such as formation of ad hoc committees, my first question would be, is there any latitude under the current agenda item where one or more ad hoc committee referrals might be appropriate to make?
The recommendation would be to agendize that for the next meeting as far as ad hoc committees, just based on the scope of the what of the item, it's the current item and the recommendation under that, which is, you know, it could directions, there could be direction to staff, but as far as forming an ad hoc committee, typically under the rules it would be, it would be, it should be placed in a, as a new agenda item for another meeting.
Right. But if you wanted to work directly with city partners, I don't think that you would need an ad hoc committee. If you wanted to work with the city manager and the police chief and the fire chief and the council members on an issue that concerns the city of Lakeport and is within the city of Lakeport's jurisdiction, you don't need an ad hoc committee with us.
Unless you're requesting for support to have two voices from the Board of Supervisors, then that would be something you could bring back. But I would also suggest to utilize the committees that, I'm sorry, I'm.
Go ahead.
Not requesting permission. Look at all the committees that exist. For example, you're talking about the Navigation Center. I know that you are the alternate for the COC, you've been joining us at the COC. Continue those conversations there and just try to throw towards some of the committees that do exist where the city is involved and the county is involved together with others as members that throw it their direction to ensure that that is a part of the conversation. And then whatever doesn't exist at that point, look to see if that you need to create a new group or you can do that unilaterally by just having discussions and building a coalition.
I thank my colleagues for their input. I also thank City Manager Ingram for his input. I don't see consensus for a special joint meeting. I will continue my outreach in various ways to the extent possible to engage with the city on this issue of fireworks, although I'm not hopeful of that, but we can try. And if there is any other ad hocks or referrals to existing like Risk Reduction Authority, I will take those up as separate agenda items in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have something? Okay. 6.7, our 11:30 AM item, consideration of amendment number one to the agreement with Sunrise Special Services for an additional additional 90 days and a new total not to exceed $307,200 for the continued operation of the North Lakeport Emergency Warming Shelter. Supervisor Sabatier.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will recuse myself from this item on the agenda and I'll elaborate. I'm recusing myself because a local media source has made it a priority to consistently implement a character assassination campaign on me and my capacity as a county supervisor. They do this with projected conspiracies and skewed statements in their opinionated oppositional perspective. For me, this comes along with the job. However, now it is spilled over into my family, most directly my wife, so I will not cast a vote on this agenda item as it gives more ammunition for this source to cast further character assassination directed at my wife, who obtains her own community perspective, which she accentuates in her capacity as a community volunteer serving on the Lake County continuum here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had that conversation, I think it was the first week of April or the second week of April, actually I think it was April 11th. Obviously I should read my memo since I think it's on there. But on April 11th, we had the discussion, we got some positive feedback, both from the city of Lakeport as well as from those who work at the facility. I've expressed my experiences from going to the facility, they've ramped up, they've adjusted to the needs, actually really appreciative of them being available during our snowstorm event, as I can only imagine what kind of hazards that would have created for those who were unsheltered compared to those that were able to be in that facility. We originally did a RFP for $300,000. Sunrise was the only proposal that was received. They, we were looking at a 90 day proposal. They offered to do it for 153,100, 600, 153,600. And after the 90 days are lapsing, which actually is today, that we don't want to see this thing close. We want, we want to continue, we want to enhance, we want to, we want to change lives and not throw lives right back out on the street. So now the new total, if the 90 days extension would be provided, is 307,200, an exact amount of the original 90 days. The idea is that there will be an RFP done for continuance into a more permanent, as I showed last time on April 11th, all of the funding availabilities that we have in order to continue those functions. There is in the amendment, a couple of changes. One is there's a new budget that was provided because Sunrise had to tweak their budget in order to ensure that the services were provided adequately. And I'll get back to that in a second. And then also the other part is if there's a 10% change on any line item in the budget, that that has to come back to be approved by the county. And that was a stipulation that the Continuum of Care requested to ensure that we keep them on on track for the budget. Now, part of the budget, I just need to be transparent. Part of the issues that have come to the Continuum of Care was the amount of money spent specifically for one employee. At the very beginning, there was a lack of employees and so few employees had to do a lot in order to ensure the services were being provided. I believe that at one point it may have, I'm sorry that I don't have the exact number and please Behavioral Health, if you can come up and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe for one month, one employee was paid $30,000 and another month, another employee was paid $18,000. Now granted, the hours are supposedly there to show why that amount was there. I have spoken with Sunrise and stated that I do want to make sure we do an audit at the end of this to ensure that all labor laws and all other things have been done correctly. But they also never went above budget. And we wanted to have a warming center and a warming center is what we have had since we've approved this on January 24th. So while it is something that stands out and I wanted to be transparent about it before getting the approval from the board so that you were aware of that, that issue that the Continuum of Care took. that the continuum of care took issue with, but again, did get the approval of the continuum of care to move forward today with the 90 days, and wanted to be very transparent with some of the hiccups that we've had. And while those hiccups are in the past, what you have in front of you is a new budget for what should be happening as of the last 15 to 20 days and moving forward into the next 90 days. I think that's all that I have at this moment.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yeah, I just wanted to report. I know that it was requested too also on that, in that discussion that the space committee meet.
Oh, yeah.
And so we did have a meeting. It was approved, obviously.
I'm glad because I forgot to check.
Yeah, so we, you know, you know, anyone else can jump on, but I was in that meeting and obviously had support for moving forward with that. Ultimately, looking for a long-term decision after the 90 days that is talked about here, because I know there are going to be some challenges that come along with that facility for zoning and other things like that. So there's a longer conversation that needs to happen. But at this point, the space committee, I don't know if it was unanimous, but it was a majority that agreed with moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just, obviously, this is my gist. Appreciate Supervisor Sabatier picking up this ball and running with it. And want to echo his concerns about, statements about transparency, which I also share with the benefit of hindsight. Would we have done things differently, or would Sunrise have done things differently? Obviously, but glass half full and overflowing with goodness, managed to stand up an emergency shelter out of nothing, you know? And that was an incredibly hard job. And from that initial standup and some of the awkwardness that went with it, we have, in this iteration, a fairly fully realized emergency shelter such as it is. I am hopeful as we get closer to the end of this and the RFP goes out, again, I don't know if we need an ad hoc committee or whatever, but we are on the hook for both a shelter crisis report and also internally, we need to have discussions in the county and hopefully with our city partners and other stakeholders too, about the potential for that site or other sites, plural, for what's going to be that, that next phase of interim sheltering operations that will follow the conclusion of this contract, hopefully, and hopefully stand as a kind of a pathway toward that permanent shelter that we and the city are partnering with on your mark request on. That vision is important, but it is several years away on, on the best of times. And so strongly support this 90-day extension. Also want to highlight the importance of planning during that 90 days to get the next RFP out and maybe with some supplemental services, because again, the standup shelter and, and the extent of the contract didn't cover things like clinical services. And there are some needs that hopefully we can discuss and address in the next, next go around on this. But this is super cool to see, super excited to see all the hard work that's gone into it. And again, appreciate you bringing this item forward.
Okay. Do we have any public input?
Kevin Ingram, City Manager at the city of Lakeport. I just want to echo what's already been said by, you know, some of the supervisors up here. I mean, I think there's definitely room to grow these pieces, but I think at the same time, what's being offered out there is a foundational piece to build upon. And I think the worst thing we could do is, is let it expire and take a step backwards. So the city is certainly committed to being a partner in that process of moving it forward, but definitely in support of your recommended action today of extending for another 90 days. And we've got some work to do and, and we'll continue to do that in the 90 days and, and beyond there. So thank you for taking this item up today.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning and thank you, Board of Supervisors. I'm Annie Barnes with Sunrise Special Services, co-founder. And I want to, to echo that, yes, it was, it was a very difficult, and, but yet, we've done it to this point. And we could not have done it without the community support and certainly assistance from our two Board of Supervisors through this journey. We do know the next 90 days is a new stage and looking so forward to tightening and improving our quality of services, as well as being able to be in a good position to show the next step as also we go into spring and summer, that this county can be proud of such a shelter to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Board. Yvonne Cox, Director of the Emergency Warming Shelter. Thank you for this opportunity, for letting us make this happen. It is a big success, and it was a very rough start. We kind of did things ass backwards, forgive me, but instead of starting with the foundation, we took off running. But all in all, it is what it is, a great success. We've helped many, and I want to continue to keep helping. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Last call for public input. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Oh, sure, yes.
Obviously in support of moving forward with this, but I do support you Supervisor Sabatier, that a budget needs to follow as we're moving forward with this. I think that's something we learned from the last one. So let's continue on that path. So if that could come back or make sure it's completed at the end of these, these contracts here, it'd be very important.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Super quick question for staff. This board already gave direction as far as spinning up what shelter 2.0 is going to look like, and I see nodding heads. All right. If there's nothing further, I would proudly move to approve amendment number one to the agreement with Sunrise Special Services for an additional 90 days and a new total not to exceed $307,200 and with the additional budgetary guidelines put in the contract extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Want to get him? Yep.
Thank you. I was trying to do. Madam Chair.
Yes.
You may wish to try to push through the next four items and then come back from lunch and closed session.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan. 7.2, consideration of travel to the California Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force meeting. This is from our admin office.
Come forward, Terry.
Good afternoon, or morning still. The California Forest Health and, oh, Wildfire and Forest Health Resilience Task Force started in 2021. I have been attending those meetings since early 2022. And I know that Chair Paeska has also attended some of them. They are invaluable. It's hosted by, it's part of this governor's office. And they have a chairman and the whole council. They meet every other month. And what's really exciting is every other, let's see, every other of the meetings, so a couple times a year, they have a two-day. So the one in Santa Cruz will, there's a resource fair that's before, and you can make really great connections. It's invaluable to learn. And with them, considering setting up a new task force to talk about the issues particularly that is impacting Lake County, I think it's critical that we be allowed to go to the meetings in person. If we can do them online, I'll do them online, you know? And if it's Southern California and it's not applicable to the work that we're doing here, we may just, you know, zoom in. But to have the ability to go particularly around the North and Central Coast, the work and the networking is, is really important.
So I'll just follow up. There's kind of two asks here. I just want to make sure that I have board support to go and represent us as a body. I've, I've attended many of the meetings virtually as a listener, and then last year in Santa Cruz, or Santa Rosa, again, as a listener, but making connections. And as the next steps for creating this tree mortality working group, I'd like to be more active, and I would just like to have the support of the board for that and approval. And then our climate officer attended these meetings with her previous employer, and so has a really deep understanding on, on what they offer and the benefits. And, and her grant does not allow for travel expenses, and her not being able to, to be, to participate in these meetings when they're applicable would really hinder us. So I wanted to get both of those asks in front of the board. And, and typically, we don't travel, and we watch them on Zoom and participate on Zoom, but, but sometimes there's a need. And I would say it's probably not going to meet the maximum travel for what's mentioned here, but we do need to have that flexibility. So I'm just going to open it up. It looks like we have a question. Supervisor Sabatier?
No question, just a comment. I spoke, I think it was last week, of Chair Paeska's advocacy over at CSAC. And as all of you know, when we go to conferences, the, the specific stuff that allows us to move forward on some of our issues are in between the meetings or when there's a break in the meeting. The meetings are typically such a formalized process that you can ask questions, you can make comments, but you're not really going to get to the answers you're looking for. You're not going to get to the next steps of what you're looking for. And so I think being in person has a huge asset. It makes a connection with the individuals, but you also have to, those private conversations where you can get the ear of the chair to make sure that they're aware of your issues and your counties. I know that this has been a process, that Chair Paeska has been trying to get everyone's attention on tree mortality, and thinking that this is going to happen virtually is probably incorrect. So I would say if there's an important meeting that is occurring, even if it's in Southern California, if you feel the need to bring it back to us to, to make that request, but I would say let's make sure that we are where we need to be to get the resources and the attention that we need to protect the, the future of our communities, because the tree mortality is a very real situation. We may have gotten a whole lot of water, but those trees are already dead. The water is not changing anything to, to heal that issue in our communities. So I, I know that I'm in favor of saying yes to this. It seems like our last meeting we went to at CSAC, that there may have been a little bit of, of progress. Let's not lose that progress. Let's be where we need to be and make sure to push it along as fast as we can.
Okay. There's no, Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, obviously in support, you know, being there in person is, right now, very critical. Obviously, Zoom does work for certain instances, but completely agree Supervisor Sabatier, having that voice from Lake County there, whether it's Chair Paeska or our climate resiliency officer is really important. Just want to make sure that we have it covered. I know that, like you were saying in the grant, there's no travel money. Are we going to try and set a budget today not to exceed, so it's not coming back every time, where they could be nimble? That would be one, one suggestion that I have. Because these things might pop up, you know, as summer gets going here, they may, they're moving a little bit more. So anyway, that's, that's what I would like to see. Because you're already covered under our travel policy, right?
I am, yes.
What we're really talking about is setting a budget for the climate resiliency officer if she needs to attend when you can't. So, and I know we do that on multiple other committees, obviously, where we're either alternates or directors. I just, the ESJPA, Lars, does most of that. And if I need to go, he lets me know, but usually handles it. So anyway, it's kind of the way I would think we'd address it. So that's it. In support, just want to make sure we have that support where they can be nimble and move when, you know, go when they need to go.
Yes, if I may. Yes. Terry is a county employee, so she falls underneath the administration's budget for traveling. It's just not reimbursable through the grant, that's all.
Okay.
Right.
All right, well, that takes care of the issue.
Okay, if there's nothing else from the board, I'll open it up to the public. Not seeing any. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
One final comment. Obviously, I'm the vice chair, and if you need to go to the meeting, stepping in to run the meeting. So don't, don't let it be a hindrance. If you think you need to be there, I'm here to support the board, so.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to offer to go for her.
No, absolutely not.
I didn't, I didn't see that one coming.
Supervisor Paeska does a great job. So, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Who's gonna?
What, what are we looking for? A motion to approve attending these meetings?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, just to, for further clarification, as to these meetings, the California Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force meetings, and it would be a motion to allow Super, Chair Paeska and the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer to attend said meetings.
I tried going right through that.
Do I need to say, and represent the county of Lake, or?
Oh, yes.
Represent and advocate for the needs of Lake County. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, 7.3, consideration of presentation by Behavioral Health Services regarding statewide payment reform for drug Medi-Cal plans and update recommendations regarding the organized delivery system, behavioral health.
Matthew, you can go ahead and put up the slide.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to present this item. I'm Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Administration for Lake County Behavioral Health Services, and I'll be briefly presenting on this item and then opening for questions. So the slide before you is essentially an expansion of what was in the memo to the board. And the consideration here today is that the payment landscape with behavioral health payment reform has been quickly coming into granularity for our mental health and drug Medi-Cal plan and department, as well as the rest of the state. And so currently, business as usual for us is that we are a drug Medi-Cal plan. And you can see on the left, those are all the entitlements to beneficiaries that are reimbursable under drug Medi-Cal. Now, the board had already approved our joining the organized delivery system in the regional model. And so as we continue to explore how, what that would look like in payment reform, we began to realize that in the regional model, our rates are capped at the PUPM, which is the per user per month fee. And so in the regional model with partnership health plan, the county pays a per user per month fee for each beneficiary, and they may access the services that they need, whichever, that are covered. And you'll see that in the middle and right columns, the services, the entitlements under DMC ODS and then the regional model are identical. The services don't change. It's the reimbursement methodology that does. With payment reform, I'm very pleased to say that the federal government and the state came through, and they made good on their promise of increasing the rates to achieve parity with other forms of healthcare. Many of those rates, I believe, are public, which is interesting. So what we learned is that our rates for regular DMC, business as usual, and also for DMC ODS in a direct contract with the Department of Healthcare Services are dramatically higher in most cases than the PUPM in the regional model with partnership. So the potential for generating significant patient revenue that must be reinvested back into services and expansion of those services for the community are absent in the regional model due to the cap of the per user per month rate. And there are other concerns, but in essence, that's what we come here today before you to say, hey, we'd actually like to press pause on that as we wrap our heads around it and maintain business as usual for a period of time, with the idea that we still want to join the organized delivery system because of the expansion of entitlements that it offers our beneficiaries. However, in the absence of joining the waiver or the organized delivery system, we are prepared to continue to cover non-Medi-Cal services such as residential treatment services and withdrawal management, as we have historically done utilizing realignment or block and withdrawal management, as we have historically done utilizing realignment or block grant funding. So I have nothing else to add, and we welcome questions.
Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you for that. It's weird what's going on with the payment reform. It feels like they're not learning from the medical changes that have occurred where fee for service was something they got rid of for a specific part because, well, let's just do 10 visits when we only need two because we can get paid for that. It just seems like we're gonna fall in the same trap where eventually they're gonna say too many visits from behavioral health and not enough outcomes. So my guess is eventually this will evolve into the next iteration, just like CMS evolved for medical stuff. We'll see. But the ODS model, you're talking about getting out of the regional but going into the direct? We're still gonna have the ODS because in my recollection, ODS kind of expanded the potential for patients to find services in different places and not have to go directly through us. Granted, we still have the entitlements, but they can go to different clinics or different agencies, receive those services, and then we can take care of the bill or whatever it is. I'm not saying that correctly, but I just wanna make sure that we're not closing that up and that we're kind of staying with the same model or the same system, different model.
I'll provide an initial response, and then I invite my colleagues to elaborate or clarify. So first of all, the first part of your comment is really in line. So this is, we're still in a phase. So the final stage of payment reform is full capitation, which means that these years between now and, I think they planned or are talking about capitation maybe in 2028. So what do we have? Like five years, essentially. And during that five years, counties have to show their claims and show how much money they're spending. And that data will be used to generate the fully capitated rate where these plans, we become a managed care plan in full. And so it's, as you can imagine, very important that we utilize and provide as many services as we can to our beneficiaries, recognizing that they've been underserved and that we need a lot more services so that we can provide true utilization and need data around those services in preparation for capitation so the state and the feds have a good picture of what it truly costs to provide the services to our community. Because right now, we've been cut off at the knees in a lot of ways to provide those services due to the limits of DMC. The second part of your question, so as I mentioned, Lake DMC plan has done, I would say humbly, an excellent job of going above and beyond to provide those expanded services that are entitlements under ODS. In the regional model, you do have some leverage of, in this case, Partnership Health Plan kind of putting together the pieces and making sure that beneficiaries can access services in the region. That being said, Lake is expanding our reach. It is our goal to continue to provide as many services as we can to all beneficiaries regionally. And we're continuing to move in partnership with other CBOs and community entities to expand those services and supports. And significantly, under, again, payment reform, in a direct contract with the Department of Healthcare Services, as I stated, there's the significant potential in reality of patient revenue to be generated that can support the expansion of needed services and supports. And so again, by entering into a regional model, our contract with the state for that regional model reflects the PUPM rate, not the reimbursement rate, and it's a huge difference. Please expand.
Hold on. PUPM?
Per user per month.
Okay.
I know.
April Gambler, Lake County Behavioral Health Deputy Director overseeing clinical services, to comment on your questions around restricting access to services. It is our intention to negotiate contracts with all of our providers to increase that process, right? So we don't wanna limit or mandate or require individuals to come through our department to be able to access those services. We want to increase and develop processes with our providers and other organizations to figure out the least restrictive way to access services. There is, however, a need to kind of evaluate how we manage those beds. So specifically, we have funding restrictions that require that we expend the dollars before we're able to bill up or draw down other revenue. In doing so, we're looking at contracting with some of our community-based organizations to purchase beds, which would allow us to expend the dollars upfront. And access would be managed, right? So we would have to work with our providers to manage wait lists and individuals accessing those resources, but they would not be limited to just those beds, right? So we're, it's gonna vary. Our providers have a right in how they wish to contract with us. We wanna honor that right, and we wanna increase access. So it may vary, depends on the provider and the contract, but we have no intention of reducing, if anything, increasing the number of services that we have.
And I appreciate that because I know the ODS conversation took like a very long route to get back to us, seemed to have some controversy during the initial conversations, but not so much once it got in front of the Board of Supervisors, and just wanna make sure we continue that. And just a quick question, and I'll stop at the talking. You seem to understand where the payment reform is going to. Is it going towards like a prospective payment system where we say this is what we're taking care of and they give us a portion of the money upfront and then pay us the latter part of the money once we're done? See, I like that system.
Yes.
Because that means that we're aiming for the outcomes, and I've seen it work in the hospital setting where we're just doing what we should be doing for the patient, not necessarily doing for what's best for the hospital.
That's right.
Love it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, were you first?
Okay. No, I just wanted to say that all my questions were answered yesterday. Thank you, Stephen. That's all I wanted to say.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, this is like kind of way over my head, but it sounds like there was an initial recommendation that we would be joining ODS regional model. And I hear the concerns about the PUPM rate being lower, but I assume it's lower for a reason in that if we join a regional model, there's some anticipation that, there's some cost savings in administration or contract management or something like that. If the recommendation is take a timeout and maybe explore contracting directly, then it's a question of bandwidth because we're still down on an interim BH director halftime. You guys do a lot of contracts already. So a couple of things. I'm a little curious about the bandwidth, if you're leaning toward directly negotiating and contracting and all that. It's like, you know, I'd kind of like the new BH director maybe be able to weigh in on that. And I also think it's not just as simple, if only because I'm reading it and I don't understand it. It's not just a simple calculus between PUPM bad and direct contracting good. I'm missing part of the equation there. The regional model that this board originally endorsed, you guys pursuing, had some benefits to it, I assume, and I'm not sure that those benefits are clear in this particular memo. And if we do go ahead and agree to take a timeout, I'd like some consideration of just how long that timeout might be. Because obviously, we're gonna have to make a choice between regional model and the direct contracting, but I don't feel like I have enough information here to agree one way or the other, other than taking a timeout because you are down a director, a director may make some sense before we pull the trigger on it. But I just don't have enough understanding of this, I guess, to really profess, to have an educated opinion.
I will defer most of the answer to Elise, but as the contracts go, we already contract for all of these services and providers, so there would be no actual additional contracts that we have to negotiate under ODS if we go directly with the state. And we are, at this point, only asking to basically reverse the guaranteed path and basically shift into neutral. And we do plan on by the short timeframe we're talking about, we're shooting for 1-1 going live in an ODS method. As it stands right now, we have a preference, but with the new payment reform, et cetera, we want time to actually see it in action and evaluate it better to then present to your board on which one we feel and why is the best option. We would come back to the board before we made the final decision.
Go ahead.
Just wanna make sure, because I thought I was clear and now I'm hazy. The reconsideration, the recommended action is reconsideration of joining the organized delivery system regional model. We would jump into the direct contract model, but still be in the ODS.
May I? So I would just like to say that we're really asking for a pause for six months to evaluate which model to go into. There may be new changes with Partnership that in six months really encourage us to join. It may be that the state or Partnership welcomes our invitation July or January 1st, 2024. At this point, we would not be, we're not requesting to join in any model of ODS until we understand what payment reform is going to or how it's going to benefit us.
So.
So the comment I made earlier to Supervisor Spatier was we fully are going into an ODS model, just not as of July 1.
Have you had any?
Very difficult for us to even get into Partnership July 1.
Have you had any conversations with our partners to check in on that? Because I know that that's where the heated conversations were in order to ensure that they were a part of our process.
We did, and actually, I see one of our partner CBOs in the audience today. And certainly, we learned a lot of lessons in that first go-around, and we definitely wanna take our community partners along with us. We could not do this work without them, and so it is critical that they also fully understand this. And as a representative of the Department of Healthcare Services managing the plan, it is our duty to provide technical assistance and guidance to CBOs with regard to contracting and meeting these requirements, certainly.
Yes.
Okay. I would have suspected an email or two from some of the partners who were very adamant about changing into the ODS. So that's why I, with the answers that I received earlier, that's kind of confusing.
Did specifically meet with a few of the vendors and go through the information we have as transparently as possible.
And from what I understand, there were emails sent today in anticipation that there would be question as to whether or not we did pull in our partners. So I'm not sure which of the board members received the email, but I know that our community-based providers, one of which did email. And then I'm not sure if one of our providers would like to comment or provide any feedback. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
My name's Laura Sullivan, and I am the Director of our Lake County Programs for Redwood Community Services, which includes a residential treatment facility in Upper Lake called Tulley House. And we have been part of the Lake County Network of Substance Use Providers since July of 2014, operating outpatient before moving into residential perinatal services in October of 2018, and welcoming perinatal and non-perinatal women since October 21 into residential care. Our focus has always been to identify the needs and to help fulfill those needs by shifting our focus based on what the beneficiaries' needs in the community are. Our residential facility allows women to bring their children under the age of 12 into treatment with them to allow a family unit to heal together. When we think about what, where we should head with this, it's not an easy decision. And so I thank everybody for being willing to come to the table with eyes wide open for what's best moving forward. Since we are a contractor with Partnership Health Plan and have been since the beginning in 2020, since contracting with Partnership Health Plan, we've been able to serve women throughout the northern region. But since October of 2021, we have not had the opportunity to serve a woman from Lake County. Our hope moving forward is whichever path the board chooses, that, sorry, moving forward, that we, local providers are included in that plan. Currently, we know if Lake County were to enter the waiver with Partnership Health Plan, that we would be, that would be the case. And we're asking that if Lake County chooses to enter the plan independently, that the board would hold the Lake County Department to working with our local providers. And so while we understand and support Lake County Behavioral Health's position in holding off for a minute and seeing where things are headed, there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of questions on the table. We do hope that as you move forward, you will look at your local providers and recognize the significance and the benefit of women seeking treatment within their home communities.
Okay. Do we have anything else from the board before I open up to the public? Okay. We'll take public input. Do you have anyone in the chambers? And we do not have any hands up in Zoom, so we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green?
So just very clearly reconsideration. So there was a prior action you're asking us to undo, and the formal nature of that action was what?
We presented ODS and offered the board to essentially vote on whether they would support the department joining the regional or the direct contract model. The board, I believe, voted unanimously to join the regional model, and we, with, and so we are asking for the board to suspend decision on that for a period of at least six months.
And the date that decision was made? Because my question is, we can either delay consideration or we can just vacate that decision entirely, and you guys can bring it back when you're ready to rock and roll. So do we have the date of that formal action? Is it, was it in the form of a resolution?
It's April 26, 2022.
And was it in the form of a resolution?
No, it was not. It was simply a board action. As regards your question, I don't believe the department would have a preference.
You have a comment?
Yeah, just one last quick comment. What are the next steps? When do you think that you'll have some of these answers? And when do you think, obviously, you're looking to start in January, but we approved it in April of 2022, and you're telling me even if you were gonna move forward, you probably couldn't be ready by July 1. So that's like 16 months or whatever the months are that you were not able to accomplish the goal that we said yes to. And so what's the timeline to figure this out and make a decision to move forward? Because January 1 is not 16 months away, and I wanna make sure that we're able to. I just kind of curious about the timeline.
That's a great question. And the timeline is, we actually did, let me give some context here. So we did a significant amount of work, actually, with Partnership Health Plan up to the point of an approved implementation plan with the Department of Healthcare Services, actually, that your board authorized our previous director to sign and submit. So we really ran all the way up nearly to the finish line and then stopped because we began to have red flags raised about the impacts of payment reform. And of course, we wanna make the best decision for our community. And so with so many unknowns about payment reform, that was the reason why we ran literally up to the finish line and then stopped. And so I think, given the fact that we did significant and substantial work around an implementation plan and joining the waiver, that infrastructure remains in place for us to continue to work on, and therefore, much of that work has already been completed, and it was a heavy lift, and we won't have to lift it again. We just need to see, continue seeking TA and guidance. We're in constant communication with the California Mental Health Services Authority of, which is a JPA. We are also receiving TA from a very foremost expert in California Behavioral Health Financing, Mike Geis. We meet with him almost weekly as we hash through some of these issues together. And so a long-winded answer is I don't believe it's gonna take us the amount of time and energy that it did before to get to where we were because we already laid that foundational work. So I think that a determination of joining in six months is very much a reality for us. And we also had a lot of support from the Department of Healthcare Services. So I do wanna commend them for the support and energy that they provided to that, and I have every reason to anticipate that they'll continue to be supportive of our decisions.
And if I could just add a little bit of feedback, the Department of Healthcare Services assigned a whole team, as did Partnership, with ensuring that we were able to join some form of ODS. When we requested the ability to press pause for a second and to ensure that that would not negatively impact us or our providers, they committed us on making a hard but logical decision because of all of the unknowns around payment reform and the significant impact that it could have, not only on our department, but our community at large. There is significant opportunity for revenue if we are able to do what we anticipate being able to do. My concern is that I don't know what July 1 is going to bring. We don't know what we're gonna be able to do. We don't know what we're going to be able to generate as far as revenue or what that process looks like. We're hopeful that it will go with few hiccups, but I anticipate it taking four to six months to join either model again. So in, in reality, we would need all the way up until July 1st.
So basically, around July 1st is when you would come back to us with a decision. And I, I agree with what Supervisor Green brought up, that we do have an interim director. No offense to our interim director, but you are not a behavioral health specialist. Thank you for stepping up and, and helping steer the ship, but it, it would be nice to have that permanent person to help out with that decision, too. So I, I don't disagree with that comment. One last comment slash question, no offense to us or what you just said, but I care more about the clients than I do us or the providers. Will the clients, those who need behavioral health services, continue to have the same level of access if we pull back today? Because the idea of ODS was supposed to expand that reach.
As we have historically done, we are going to continue to ensure that we utilize every dollar of funding we have to provide the most client services possible. It is a fact, though, that in the direct contract, those services aren't reimbursable. But in payment reform, we have, again, significant generation of patient revenue dollars that can be reinvested into non-covered services for any DMC county. So I can't make you a promise about that, but I can assure you that myself and this team only hold the client and the services at heart, and we are making decisions based on that alone. We do not want to negatively impact client services and our community at large, and we recognize that we have a lot of responsibility.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just going to be completely honest. When we do not contract with Partnership, we lose all of their contracts that they have in other counties for availability. Those were not guaranteed to us, anyway. We were still competing with other counties across several regions, across several populations for those same beds. So there was no guarantee, but we do lose that capacity to be able to utilize those beds. We do increase capacity in our ability to generate revenue and purchase additional beds for Lake County residents with our providers who are still going to likely contract with Partnership. So we then take the competitiveness off the table and ensure that although they may not be as vast, they are ours. And so that I can say confidently.
That was a very difficult yes or no answer. And I don't know what to make of it. I, I just think, to me, that's the most important part, is I, I walk around in our communities, the need is there, and it hurts to know that it's possible that we would lose some potentially. And again, adding all these caveats to the services that are, that we require for those individuals.
Payment reform requires that we take that money and reinvest into our community providers to expand services. So there is an opportunity for our contracted providers to build into their contracts the, the funds or potential plans to increase. So in reality, it may not be limiting but expanding. It, it's economic growth, it's capacity growth, it's, it's partnership with our providers, it's, it's all of those things that we dreamed of, for me personally. We just need to help our providers and partner to do that.
Well, I sure hope they have the rural hat on when making those decisions, because expanding services in rural and reinvesting is a more difficult task than in an urban area. So, thank you.
Say one thing, with what April just said, that's why we want to go to neutral and look real hard at the other option, because that all comes to play in the direct model. You see a lot more expansion possibilities there.
Can I make one last request?
Sure.
I know I'm nitpicking your words, Mr. Carter. You said we've met with a few of our providers. Can we ensure that there is a overall reach to all of our providers rather than just a few? And maybe that was just a bad choice of words, and I'm nitpicking that specific word. I just want to make sure that the conversation reaches every single one of our providers to ensure that they're aware and, and we can continue to work the best.
Got the wording correctly. Yes, we will reach out to all of our vendors if not, if we haven't already. I just have only personally spoken with.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready?
I'm supportive of the requested action. I'm just struggling on the form of it now. So it sounds like you're not just asking for reconsideration of ODS regional model, but you want our blessing to analyze the other model under ODS and bring back recommendations.
Can I make a request? Can we come back in three months?
That's what I was going to.
Oh, okay.
Well, how, I mean, how do we really come back with a fiscal impact in July when we won't?
It would have to be near the end of July, so we have a full month of fiscal impact. And at that point, so an August board date is when we can.
Well, we, yeah. As the medical, as the bill, like his billing, I would say, like, September, we would have realistic of what we could actually bill and see that revenue come in.
And in April, at least, would we still be able to go into one of the ODS models budget January 1st if we waited until September? To make the final go with the state.
My recommendation is that we come back in July, not necessarily with an understanding of a complete fiscal model and forecasting, but at least some type of an update so that we have a direction to go at that point. Because there are other things, other than finances, that are contingent upon that. It may be our contract negotiations don't go as well as we anticipate, and so I would recommend July 1 to come back.
Vice Chair Simon?
Well, it sounds like there's a whole bunch more discussion needs to go on internally to figure out what's coming back. I just want to make sure, you know, that, that we give you guys the time you need, because everything is up in the air. It'd be great. Supervisor Sabate did a good job of trying to figure it out, and then by the end, we're asking some more questions. So I know there's a lot to be done, and I just want to make sure we give you the time. We, as a board, I think, support you coming back when you guys are ready. You know, whether it's August or September, it sounds like that's still a discussion to be made. But we want to give you the time to make that decision on behalf of our clients here, which are needy community members. So I, I heard our county council clicked something.
We're both clicked. You want to go first? I'm going to go second.
So just for the board's reference, because there was a reference made to the April 26, 2022 board meeting, what the board approved, it was twofold as to this item. The, by vote of the board, had approved the joining, the organized delivery system. And then the other approval was using the regional model. So depending on where we are, board could certainly give direction to staff on certain things, issues to come back at a later date. It's not clear at this point if staff is still requesting vacating those approvals from back in April of 2022 at this point, pending, you know, further discussions for that meeting at a later time on this item.
We would just want to get rid of the regional model piece.
Yes. Are you done yet? Okay. We're still learning. I think, given the complexity of the issue, the fact that the vendors, some vendors still need to be informed, and it would be nice if the board had a timeline and a single request from behavioral health, we could bring this back next week with more clarifying information to, so you can make an informed decision.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It, it sounds to me like we just want to, at least, at the very least, delay moving forward with what the previous direction was, rather than ignore the fact that it was a previous direction, hence why you're bringing this to us. And so I, I would agree that if you don't feel ready and payment reform has kind of created a big, giant nebulous blur as to what is the overall effects, then I would agree to saying, let's go ahead and rescind or reconsider the regional model, continue moving towards ODS, and then coming back in July or whatever is the easiest date for you to provide. I, I would suggest that the financial, to me, is not the most important. It is important, but both level of service and financial, I think, is, is a conversation that we need to understand to, in order to balance, because we can't go broke and not be able to provide any services in the long run, but we also can't just look at the finances and ignore the fact that some of these services might also get impacted, so.
And the reason I requested July was because I wanted to reassure our providers that we were in communication with the board and enlisting the board's support in whatever decision we made. So having that constant contact and presentation to the board also helps build trust with our partners and transparency, and so that's important to me as well. So that's why I requested July, and then if we have to come back in another month after that or two months after that, I'm, I'm open to that as well.
Okay.
So I'm ready to move forward with the reconsideration of the regional model if the conversation is over.
Yes.
No, I was waiting for you to make the motion.
Yeah, make the motion.
If I may, it would be a motion to rescind the board's approval back in April 26, 2022 of using the regional model to be carried over by motion.
I'm always appreciative of you helping out with that. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes, and we'll see you this summer. Thank you. Michael, my niece is going to take the time. Item 7.4, consideration of the following advisory appointment, Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. And we've got the application for Corolla Kennedy. There was a question before about being a tribal representation and confirmation from Robinson, and that has come through?
Right. I've confirmed with Chair Cromwell that that is the case.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, come on up.
I thought you didn't see her. I saw you looking down.
My neck doesn't turn very well right now.
Joan Moss, I have here an advisory from the Environmental Protection Agency about eating fish.
Okay.
And I'd like to finish what I have to say, because this board.
This has nothing to do with you.
Yes, it does.
No, this is about appointing a position to the advisory council, that, or the advisory.
Then I'll have to write it out and give it to you as a claim.
Okay. You can bring it to public comment at the beginning of our board meeting, but this is, this is an appointment. That's it.
You have voted to.
You're not Joan.
Work with the advisory committee about the hitch.
We're not giving direction to the advisory committee. We're only appointing this one person, and, and we have to keep our discussion on.
Okay, I'll try to do it another way, but.
Okay.
I want to say that.
I want you to do it a different way. Thank you. Do we have any comments on appointing this one person, Corolla Kennedy, on behalf of Robinson Ranteria, to this Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee? Anything from the public? I'm not seeing any hands, so we'll bring it back to the board.
Just want to clarify, it was for the tribal representative aspect of this committee.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to appoint Corolla Kennedy as a tribal representative on the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7.5, consideration of reappointment to the North Coast Emergency Medical Service EMS Committee to include delegation of primary and alternate membership. And did you want to speak to this?
If I may, I know that Johanna put this on there for us. There was some confusion. There was a meeting for North Coast EMS that was being put together, and I looked at our appointments, and both Supervisor Green and myself were appointed, but with no separation of alternate or primary. And rather than making those decisions behind closed doors, since we get the approval of the board to make those appointments, in specific sometimes for alternate and primary, we thought we would bring this back to it, have the board approval for the separation of who is primary and alternate. And at this moment in time, since Supervisor Green is the EMCC primary and I am the alternate, it seems to make sense to continue that through the North Coast EMS, that he be primary and I be alternate, unless there is opposition to that.
Anybody, okay, anybody in the public have a comment about this appointment? If you have a comment about this appointment on this item, you can come on up.
Joan Moss, I believe there is a lack of communication about the EMS.
Okay, but this is just about the appointment.
Thank you.
This is just about the appointment. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, without further conversation, I move to approve Supervisor Green as the primary to the North Coast EMS Committee and myself, Supervisor Sabate, to the alternate for membership.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will be continuing 7.6 for another day, so we're not going to hit that item. And the last thing before we go to lunch and close session will be our calendars. So who is ready to start with calendars?
I'll go ahead and go. Going to finish the board meeting today, and then potentially going to try and make it to the Middletown Area Merchant's Dinner that's happening at the Greenview this evening. I saw that on my desk today. I was like, all right, I might try and make that one. Tomorrow, I have some doctor appointments I need to deal with. I'll take care of that in the morning. And then Thursday, have the P G N E, I'm doing a site visit with the Middletown High School in P G N E about the GI site out on Butts Canyon Road. It's, no, I think it has to do with the sciences class. But anyway, I've been invited, so I'm going to join P G N E, Melinda Rivera, and our high school tour, the P G N E site on Butts Canyon Road. Look forward to doing that. Haven't been out there in many, many years. Obviously, go by it all the time, but actually out on the site, we'll go out and do that. So took advantage of that opportunity. Friday morning, have the C A O, meeting with C A O. Saturday, I'll be in Sacramento attending a cancer walk that I've committed to on behalf of someone who passed away, and then back here on Monday, the 1st, and then Tuesday for the board meeting. I don't think I have anything from, and the weeks fly together as we talk about things. I don't remember if I talked about the Workforce Alliance in North Bay that I attended last week, you know, the, the workshop. So it was more for the executive committee, not the governing committee. We do have two new members. We have the owner of the Sashop Restaurant, he has joined the board, and also Rental Solutions to look at, you know, just creating workforce opportunities here, both in the hospitality industry, many different industries, as we move forward and try and to do that. So we've got some local commitments, I think, from some, you know, really dedicated folks, and, you know, hopefully we'll continue to, to move that forward. Have made a request to Bruce Wilson of the governing board that either in May or June, we get on the agenda to come and give a report to the board here. Obviously, a lot of work being done in many different jurisdictions, but just want to focus here on Lake County and where we're at and looking for results. So excited about some of the new board members and the conversation. So that was a half a day workshop that we did down at the Napa Junior College, and there's going to be a lot of funds coming down through, you know, some of the new reform bills that were just passed, the infrastructure bills, other stuff, to look at those opportunities, whether it's internships or just building the community workforce. So we're excited about that. It was neat to see the Napa Junior, Junior College down there, too. Look what they're doing. You know, we had some presentations that came in, but I But I do have some new board members that we greatly appreciate, both in, like I said, Rental Solutions, as you know, is more of a federal contracting business, and, you know, the Sashop obviously is in the hospitality arena. So those are all important things as we move forward. So that's what I have to, I forgot to report about that last week.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Looks like I have a meeting with Water Resources tomorrow morning related to some work on the Blue Ribbon Committee. I think that's because Supervisor Crandall will be not available at the next committee meeting, so I hope that's right, and I hope to learn about that. I do have a medical appointment in the afternoon, I was going to ask Supervisor Sabatier if he might be available as alternate for first five, to pick up the slack on that. Did meet Monday, yesterday, with Scotts Valley Advisory Council, I think it was a very productive meeting, and I think they've given me some guidance about some things they want to see move forward, so I appreciate that. And I haven't scheduled it yet, but I'm hoping to meet with our new deputy C A O for Economic Development and bounce some ideas around. Excited to see that hire in place, and excited to hear that he's excited to be here. We like it when people move here and get excited, so lots to unpack with that. And that's all I have on my calendar right now. I may be missing stuff, but if so, you know where to find me, reach out. Thank you.
Down here.
Okay, is it my turn?
Sure.
All right, so I will go, start off with last week, let me go to, okay. And so last week, Saturday, of course, did the Upper Lake cleanup with the, in the town. They cleaned the whole main street, and so it was a real positive event, and the town looks really great right now, so I'll go ahead and start with that. Yesterday, I was asked to be interviewed by CBS Sacramento about the, there's a lawsuit from an environmental group that was previously firefighters alleging that the, that the, what is it called, the retardant, fire retardant, is causing issues with the water quality. And so with that, it puts counties like ours in a position where if there is a fire, this will, if this isn't used, it could likely put us in more harm's way. So they asked me at, like, the, you know, 11th hour, I wanted to recommend, of course, Supervisor Pisca or Chair Pisca, but it was a quick turnaround, went on, I'm not sure, I think it was on last night, I had people saying, hey, I seen you on the news, or whatever, so, you know, I, so that took place yesterday. Tomorrow, executive meeting in Sacramento with R C R C, and then the debrief for the Community Visioning Forum will be in the evening. Thursday, we'll have an, I have an ad hoc EPA Farm Ranch Rural Communities Federal Advisory Committee meeting, Naco Leadership meeting, Middle Creek Restoration Brief with Army Corps, Dylan Van Dyne, Lake County Recreation Agency Board, and Cloke Bus. So that's Thursday, Friday, Naco event is, there are Thursdays and Fridays, so there's that. And then I have a Cal Water meeting. Saturday, we'll more than likely stop by the North Shore Ready Fest, which is on Highway 20, next to your Obistro, and so that'll be Saturday. And then Monday, C A O meeting, and then back here to the board on Tuesday.
How do we see you on the news?
I look for it, you know, because I wanted to see, like, again, my comment, I think I made to you, was I felt like I sounded like Forrest Gump when he was sitting with John Lennon, you know, like, so I didn't want to, I wanted to see if I really looked like that, but, yeah.
If you find the link, send it to us.
I will.
Definitely got to see it now. My turn?
Yes.
All right. I was going to say something, what did I do last week that I wanted to bring up? I did meet with the Farm Bureau and Farm Bureau members, I'll be bringing something on May 9th, even though I told them it was May 12th, obviously the wrong date. I'll be bringing something back to the board to figure out what the next steps are. I feel like I've reached my limit, where if I keep moving forward, I'm either stepping on some toes of committees that already exist, or just moving in a direction that may not be the most appropriate direction to take. So I'll be bringing that discussion to the board. Yesterday, had a good meeting with the Economic Mobility Leadership Network. In fact, I also met with Ben, I only know him as Ben, his last name is completely not in my mind right now. It was a good meeting, very happy that he's here, absolutely excited to have that new focus. We've never not focused on it, but in such a, one individual and a division, to be focused on economic development, I think is one of the most important things I've seen here in the time that I've been here, and I'm looking forward to the outcomes of that. But I need to key him into the Economic Mobility Leadership Network activities that we've been having. Yesterday, we spoke with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, who pays for the E M L N Network, to see what are our next steps in achieving our goals that we all have. Again, wonderful team from West Virginia, Florida, Wisconsin, Oregon, California, so many different people from different locations, similar to probably the Naco leadership meetings that you guys are, have gone through and are going through. It's a great way to network and see all the other issues that everyone else is dealing with, which makes us not feel so bad sometimes that we also have those same issues. But yesterday, had some good conversations, I'll be gone again in week of May 22nd to go to Arizona for Coco Nino, and in July, will be at the Naco Conference in Texas. Appreciate staff helping out with the accommodations and everything else for that. Tomorrow, I have a Technology Governance Committee, I have a, I will be there to pick up your slack for the first five, that's what alternates are for. If I have the chance, I'll be joining the Lake County Fire Protection District, monthly meeting, just to listen in and see what's going on. And there is our, the new middle school that will be opening in Clear Lake, or at least in the Conocda Unified School District, which expands further than just the city of Clear Lake. But Obsidian Middle School is having a meeting with parents, and so not only do I have a child who will be going to that middle school, but it also, nice to know exactly what's happening with the new school and the changes that will be occurring at Conocda Unified, because that impacts everybody in our community. On the 27th, starting off with Judges Breakfast, meeting with our C D D Director to discuss some items that I need to bring back to the board, set up for a Middle Creek Restoration Meeting, not sure if that's with Thompson's office or Thompson himself, but that's on Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday is, I think, with--
It's like a briefing or something like that, I think.
It's with Dylan, Dylan Van Dyne.
Oh, it's with the Army Corps, gotcha. Because then there's another one that I got confused, which is right now on hold, which is on Friday, which will be with Thompson's office. The North Coast EMS meeting that is, was on Thursday, the 27th, has been canceled, so now that we're set, we're set for the next meeting, whenever that happens. I guess I do have a question about that. There are times where we get appointments done, and we don't necessarily receive those emails right off the bat, is there a process, are we supposed to reach out, or is there a process where staff reaches out? Just kind of curious, I mean, there's so many things happening that it's easy for things to, for wires to get crossed, but just kind of curious about that. Because there's some committees that I still see Tina Scott's name on, I still see Rob Brown's name on, so I don't know how those things get updated.
We'll reach out, and we'll update the committee list, too.
Okay. And then on Friday, again, spoke about the meeting about Middle Creek, not Middle Creek, sorry, Potter Valley Project, different situation, with Thompson's office. I will be meeting with the fire districts and our hospitals to continue discussing our I F Ts. And over the weekend, I am going to be joining, I appreciate that the city of Clear Lake is very proactive in putting events together, and they have a comedy night happening on the 29th, so I'll be going to that. And then on Monday, I'll be preparing for our PEG meeting, but that's, won't happen until the week later, but I got to put the agenda together, meeting with our C A O, and I have another Potter Valley Project thing on Monday, so either it'll happen on Friday or Monday, we'll figure it out, but then I'll be back here on Tuesday. And just final comment, this is the prime time to try to get rid of the vegetation that we're worried about, please go out and take care of your property. Code enforcement can't go after every single property, but we do have responsibilities as property owners and even as tenants to try and secure properties as best as we can, so please get out there while it's beautiful out, enjoy the sunshine, and let's knock down some of these weeds and vegetation so we can have a safe community.
And the burn ban's May 1st. We had an excellent tree mortality task force meeting last week, a lot of participation, a lot of conversation. Our contractor, M G E, who is putting together our Cal O E S application attended, and it was really great to have them involved. I want to just make a little update from my report last week, where I said there was 10,000 dead trees in the area that we're going to prioritize, which is mostly Cobb in South County. But she brought up the fact that we actually have 22,000 standing dead trees along all of our roadways, our county roadways throughout Lake County. I know there's a lot up in the Pillsbury area, so I'm hoping that you can help bring the fire protection into those conversations.
No?
I haven't heard.
I sent the captain the invite, so I'll circle back with him.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I got an email from them, but I would really like to get them involved as soon as possible. Anyway, 22,000 dead trees, we can't get them all at once, but the cost per tree has gone up from 3,000 a tree to 4,000 a tree, so I'll let you do some internal math and fall down later. So again, big problem for our county, and we're going to keep pushing for all the resources that we can get. Saturday was Earth Day, there were so many things to do. I was out on Mount Conocda because I had auctioned myself off, but then there was the Kelseyville F F A plant sale, which is always a huge hit, and then the Earth Day celebration with cow pies.
Did attend that, too, so.
And all the people they drove up on the mountain to tour around, so lots of great things. And then the aviation gathering, I saw the airplanes when I was up on Conocda, so it was a good weekend for being out and about, perfect weather. Tomorrow, I have a gender review, I have the bi-weekly meeting with the home hardening team, and then Thursday, I may just, that Clear Lake, the Blue Ribbon Committee's technical subcommittee, there is a speaker that's going to be there, but he's also going to be at the Fire Chiefs meeting that I would like to hear, I'm just not sure if I'll be able to make that work or not, I kind of don't think so, but I would like, I want to find out more about one of the speakers. Then we do have the recreation meeting in the afternoon, Lakeport City Hall. Friday, we have our Staff Hazard Tree Discussion, which also includes the Conocda Fire Safety Council and our Zone Benefit Meeting. And then Monday, my, just my meeting with Susan so far, and then back on Tuesday. But Monday, the burn ban does take effect on May 1st. Okay, that is--
If I could add one quick thing, yesterday, State Water Boards were in town, they were at Menestino College putting on a workshop for surface water diverters and the reporting requirements, and it was very well attended, and I want to thank the Farm Bureau for encouraging that workshop to happen, and Menestino College for providing the venue. Lots of good information out there, also some really good questions about how we scope that data and how things that might have worked in years past, they're looking to brush that up. So lots of good info, and thanks to Farm Bureau for putting that out. I did invite the presenters to reach out to our cannabis community, too, because I didn't see a lot of community feedback from our cannabis growers, I think they also need to hear that message, and it's just very encouraging to see the State Water Boards following through in the exact manner they said they were going to, they are engaging with our local community, they are listening, and they are providing useful information right now, and how we can all improve, giving the state better data to make better decisions as we move forward with our Clear Lake hitch emergency. So that was super cool to see, thank you.
Okay, so we're finished with our open session, we're going to go to lunch and come back at 2:00 P M. for closed session, we have 8.1 conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 D1, Citizens for Environmental Protection and Responsible Planning at all County of Lake, oh, V County, County of Lake at All, and 8.2 addendum conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 D2, E1, one potential case. Thanks for joining us, and I'll see you guys back here at 2:00.
2:00.
2:00 P M.
2:00 P M. Okay, is there any action to be taken out of closed session?
Yes, there is action to be taken out of closed session, we do have two items we need to bring up, so I'll start with our number one item. Do you have to read it again? You read it before, correct?
I did read it before, 8.1.
8.1, yes, item 8.1. So I need to make a motion, need to make a motion waiving the competitive bidding requirements under the county's purchasing ordinance for the additional $5,000 requested in amount since the investigation is almost complete and going out to bid or request for proposals at this point would produce no economic benefit to the county.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve increasing the retainer agreement amount by $5,000, and authorize a county administrative officer to send notice of approval of this amount to the investigator.
And just for additional clarification, the investigator would be Oppenheimer Investigations Group.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next.
Excellent, the next action to be taken is on item 8.2, I would like to move, to approve the assignment, or sign the amendment number one to settlement agreement and mutual release of claims. Yeah. Should I read out the entire title here?
You may, the 8.2 item actually has the, the name of the case under the closed session item, so just for clarification, it would be under the citizens, the settlement agreement of mutual release of claims, in the case of Citizens for Environmental Protection and Responsible Planning, Lynn Nelson and Matt Walter versus County of Lake at All, case number C V 421326.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, okay, and this meeting is adjourned.